Hey Karen, Derek, shall we start?
Yes.
Okay. All right, good evening. This is a regular, this is a regular meeting of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment, being held electronically via Zoom on November 8th, 2023 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Publics Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on November 3rd, 2023, and has been posted to the municipal website, wwwprinceton.gov/meetings. Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by Executive Order 292 in accordance with the Emergency Remote Public Meetings Protocol for local public bodies to conduct a public meeting without physical attendance by members of the public. Notice that during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April, 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year. And by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Karen, could you call her all, please?
You want me to or you want Claudia?
I'm sorry.
I will.
It's okay.
I will. Ms. Chen?
Here. Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davich?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mrs. Shriver?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum? Mr. Stein? Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Sherman Cohen?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. We have two resolutions this evening. The first is 14 Randall Road, Block 7403, Lot 12 in the R5 Zone. It's case Z23 slash 392. The resolution is in, has been posted on the website, and I believe members have a copy. Have you, has any, well, has everybody had a cop, a chance to review it? And if so, do anybody, does anybody have any comments? And if there are no comments, would someone like to make a motion?
My only question actually on both resolutions was, it doesn't indicate who it was moved by or seconded by. I don't know if that.
And Bernice, that's because the tape was not up online. So I'm gonna have to rely on Claudia to fill that in because I'm afraid my notes didn't. I was concerned about whether it was accurate what I had. So, and unfortunately, the tape is not online of the meeting. So Claudia, if you can.
It was moved by, by you, Ms. Chen.
Yeah, I think I did move the first one, so that's.
The second one, and the second one was Mr. Stein.
Well, do you mean that, that George was the second on it? Is that what you mean?
That's correct. It was moved, yes, second by.
And that will be in the resolution, Bernice, when it, when we, you know, when it's when tonight's vote is recorded, then we will have that information filled in that you moved approval. George was the second.
Okay, so if someone would like to make a motion?
They're moved.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Floyd.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Shriver?
Yes.
Sherman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, the second, the second resolution is case number Z23-362 28 H L Road Block 36.01, Lot 12 in the R1 Zone. Once again, the resolutions are in your packet. Claudia, do you know who?
Yeah, it was moved by Mr. Floyd and seconded by Mrs. Shriver.
Okay. Board members, after this resolution was circulated to you, I received a couple of comments from Mr. Kennedy. What he asked was that on page four, it's paragraph seven, that's part of the findings. He asked that we add at the end of the sentence and the configuration of the first floor windows on the right side of the house, meaning that the applicant would be able to retain that configuration. And going on the last page with the conditions, condition two, rather than phrasing it that the applicant was going to comply with all recommendations of Historic Preservation Commission, instead asked that we rephrase it to say the applicant will submit revised drawings of the simplified front porch protocol design, including small glass side lights it proposed to HBC for administrative review, and add compliance with the recommendations in the September 22, 2023 HBC memo to shutter in place the existing north elevation window shown on the applicant's plans for removal. Now, I know Ms. Kim is here tonight. I did review it with her. I believe these comments are acceptable to her. I don't know if, I don't see Elizabeth on the screen, but so I don't know if any board members have questions or concerns about these requested changes.
Siri, call Elizabeth.
I'm here, Claudia. I'm just trying to get my video up.
My sound.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So when Karen had sent it to me, I said, as far as shutter in place, that is accurate. There was a conversation about in the memo, they talked about keeping the same muttons to be true to what's existing out there on the street-facing facade. That wasn't discussed that I recall at the meeting, although the architect did talk about the fenestration changes on the north side, the right, right side of the structure. And the reasoning why they wanted to change those win windows to be gang windows, I think that, you know, it's rooms, and they wanted a little bit more light. I don't recall the, the the zoning board members responding to that at all, but it was addressed by the applicants.
Yeah, it was, and I, I don't think anybody, I remember that, but I don't think anybody had any negative comments on the windows.
So unless there's any other comments, those, those are the changes that the applicant has, has suggested.
All right, so if there are no other questions, if someone would like to make a motion?
I'm over approval, Floyd.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll second them.
Thank you. Claudia? Claudia? You're muted.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Shriver?
Yes.
Sherman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We have four for applications this evening. The first application is 141 Harris Road, Lot 7207, Lot 2 in the R5 Zone. Karen, are the notices in order and can we take jurisdiction?
All righty, we do have one issue that we need to get resolved with respect to noticing for this application. A question arose as to.
Karen, you're muted, muted?
Yeah, yeah, we lost you, Karen, you're muted.
Let me start again. We do have one question regarding noticing that we need to have resolved. A question arose as to whether the neighbor at 226 Jefferson received noticing of the application in a timely manner. The neighbor, as I understand it, is here with us tonight, right? And if and that would be Ms. Herpen, is that right? All right. You know what? We don't have your audio. Can you unmute yourself, Ms. Herpen?
It appears you're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Okay. We kinda have to hear you for this. Let's see.
The only way for her to call in.
I, I guess you could do that. We've got to give Ms. Herpen the number, though. What would be the right number? Let's just see. One minute. Ms. Herpen, if we give you a phone number, can you use your mobile phone and call us? Because then that way we can see you and also speak with you, hear you at the same time. Okay, now we've got another problem.
He's frozen.
Frozen. Okay.
Mr. Dugan, is he there?
Yeah, here's Mr. Dugan. Can you unmute? Here you go.
Ms. Turpin's back, baby.
Okay. But we still can't hear. Ms. Turpin, if we give you a phone number, stay on the screen, but if you could use your cell phone, you got it? Yeah? Okay. Okay, what's the number? The number of the, all right. You'll dial one, then 646 558 8656. And then you made, do you need the webinar ID number? Yeah, you need that? Okay, it is 869 But no? Okay.
Oh, there we go. We're getting there. Close.
Okay, I see if, well, I see a phone appearing. Very faint. We can sort of hear you.
Hi.
Oh, great.
Can you hear me?
All righty. Yeah, we can hear you, Ms. Herpen.
All righty. All righty. Yeah, we can hear you. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes. All right.
I think everyone else has to mute themselves.
All of us, are you? I had to. Yeah, I'm sorry, I had to close the webinar on my computer because I had a huge echo.
Well, we'll just have to manage. We, we were able to see, all right, Ms. Herpen, you own 226 Jefferson, is that correct? I, oh, let me, let me take a step back. I need to swear you in, Ms. Herpen. Do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
All right. You own 226 Jefferson, is that correct?
Yes, I, we own, my husband and I own that property, absolutely.
All righty, and but, but you currently live out of state, correct?
Yes, we live in California.
All right. And it's my understanding that you did receive the noticing for tonight's meeting? And that
Yes, we did.
You are, you're waiving any defects in that noticing, which may not have, it may not have reached you, let's say, in the procedure that's normally done or within the timeframe, but you did receive it and you're not objecting to that form of noticing, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And I also understand that you wanted to indicate that you don't have any objections to the relief that's proposed in the application regarding the front porch, is that correct?
Yes, correct. We've reviewed the, the plans. Everything has been submitted to us, and we think that it looks good, and we have no objection to, if everybody else agrees for this to proceed.
All righty. Board members, do you have any questions for Ms. Herpen?
I don't.
No? All righty. Then with that, yes, I can advise that the noticing is in order and the board can take jurisdiction. And Ms. Herpen, thank you very much for appearing tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, bye-bye.
All right, so let's begin. Who's going to be presenting this case?
Well, do you want to hear Derek's memo first?
Well, I was gonna ask the Derek's memo. All right, Derek, would you care to give us?
Which, whichever you want, Steve. I didn't mean to.
No, it's okay. No, no problem.
Derek, let me swear you in for the evening. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Sarah Rasmussen and Joshua Tobiason are the owners of 141 Harris Road. Kwame Dugan esquires the applicant, and they're seeking a C1 and C2 variance relief to request construction of a front porch that was constructed, to permit construction of a front porch that was constructed without zoning approval. Properties in the R5 Zone, or the R6 Zone, excuse me, in the former Princeton Township, the subject lot is non-compliant with regard to the 10,890 square foot lot area, the existing lots 8,000 square feet and a lot with requirements 85, the existing lots 50. The house itself is non-compliant with regard to the 15-foot left-side setback, the existing's 4.4. It's not complying with the prevailing front yard setback, which is 35.5, the existing's 29 and a half, and it's non-compliant with the required three-foot setback on the driveway, the existing zero, and the garage setback is five, and the existing is three feet. A small 5.5 by nine and a half covered front porch was constructed without zoning authorization, and a notice of violation was issued in May of 2021. Appropriate, subsequently filed a variance application, which was deemed incomplete. The subject was purchased by the current owners in late September of 2023. The application could not be placed on the agenda prior to the closing. The previous owner, Mr. Kwame Dugan, is acting as the applicant for this variance request. The front porch encroaches into the front yard setback, which is 35 and a half feet. And existing is 29 and a half, and after the porch is constructed, the front yard setback will be 24 feet. There are provisions that allow front porches to encroach into the eight-feet into the front yard setback, however, it doesn't really help this applicant in this, this situation. So they've requested consideration under both the C1 and the C2 criteria. And that's pretty much my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Board members, any questions? Nope, we're good. Okay. If the applicant would like to begin.
Mr. Dugan, if you could unmute yourself, we're gonna swear you in. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
And I understand you, you are a licensed attorney, but tonight you're appearing in the capacity of the applicant, correct?
Correct.
All righty.
In some, the, when we purchased the home, it lacked a front covering, and and the materials, you'll see that there was no shelter, and when we hired contractors to to do some, some work, the, the initial contractor said because of the, the scope of the of the, the basically was, we were seeking an awning, a covering, just a shelter an elderly mother who was living with us from rain and, and sleeping, you know, the environmental factors when trying to enter the home. The contractor said no permit was required because it was less than 1.0 square feet. We realized after the fact they were wrong. Subsequent contractors, we did indicate that this was something to be rectified, asked that they address it, and we are deferred to them to, to do that. They did look at it and say that they didn't find any issues with the actual workmanship, and so we relied on that work to to address the the issue before the sale, before the home was, was transferred. Now, the existing setback prevent prevent the building of shelter over the original entry area. So all we had was natural cover from trees, no protection at all. There are also infants in the home, infants and strollers, and it was a safety hazard. Without a front porch, without shelter, bad weather, and an oak tree in the, in the middle of the yard, dropping acorns would, would cause some fright. So the intent of the porch was really to benefit the community by allowing an agent in place, which is our mother-in-law, and keep the children safe, open design, address aesthetic sightlines. All costs were borne by by us, and increase the property value. And so to deny this would mean potentially destroying the the porch and the economic value that's accrued. The porch is visually appealing as well. Will, I, I am taking responsibility for not you know, obtaining the permits, but seek understanding based on our safety motivations, our trust in, in contractors, and ask that adherence to the spirit would allow this modest but needed alteration to be permitted without zoning approval.
You gotta speak a little louder, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not. I did not do a test prior to, is this?
You keep going, please.
Okay. I that's, that's essentially the the background and the rationale for for the development and the, and the request. It's, it's on its own, if one looks at the, if you look at the the before-after and the, and the materials, you'll see that it's aesthetically pleasing, though very, it's a minimal in terms of the distinction from a distance. The new, you know, and the new homeowners really should not be penalized for our ignorance of the requirements and our reliance on the, the guidance from subsequent contractors we engage.
Did you get a building permit?
We did, yes.
You have a, you have a valid building permit?
Yes, we do.
Which is interesting, because typically, Derek, don't the, doesn't the, doesn't your office comment before it goes on to building?
Typically, you would need a zoning permit for for this type of extension?
So, so the, it didn't go through you then? They just?
Yeah, I haven't seen a building permit, so I can't speak to that.
Yeah. So there, I guess that's a question. I mean, do you have, do you have a a sign-off from the building department or something that validates the construction?
The building, yes, actually, I do. If you would grant me some time, I will go and secure. I think actually that we're in, in preparing. I did review the various permits we have. And I'm fairly fairly certain, but let me let me put up let me put that on, let's put on the table, so I can, I can make sure that what I actually do have is a building permit versus a construction permit. I, I, I wanna make sure I'm not confusing the various permits, because we have I think about eight, well, six or seven permits were issued. And I was I may, I may, maybe speaking out of turn and saying, yes, a permanent permit is, is one of them. So let me, let me confirm that. Would you should I take some more questions, well, before retrieving that? Or would you wanna hang on while I?
Well, well, wait a moment.
Wait, okay. Okay, give me a minute, please. I'm gonna go off camera. Excuse me.
Then, ladies, Steve, off
Yes.
Off topic, but I got a notification from Verizon that my cable wasn't stable. And it wouldn't be until about 9:30 tonight. I don't know whether that's just me, but I've been having trouble hearing you all. Am I the only one who's having any problems with that?
I haven't, I haven't gotten any notices nor by having any problems. Hang on as long as you can.
Okay.
Hi, I am gonna have to go into these, my digital records, because what I have is incomplete presently. So I will, I, while I do that, I will say the the construction occurred during the pandemic, that right at the height. So in terms of inspections, not certain that this this would have gone through or been part of that process, but this would have gone through or been part of that process, but I digress while I.
I don't believe the building department shut down totally, and, um, again, it would have been required and they would have inspected.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, um, may I suggest or propose that if, that we just consider this application and if we choose to approve it, we just condition the approval?
Um, I think that's reasonable, yeah.
Rather than stop?
Okay. All right, we can do that. I mean, if no other board members have any objection, we'll continue on. All right, let's, okay, uh, Mr. Dugan, you wanna finish up? Is, do you have anything more to say?
No.
Okay, so.
Chairman Khan, I, I believe the current owner of the property is on screen, Mr. Tobias, and I don't know if he wants to say something or, or he's, if he's just here to, to, uh.
Well, he can say something now or in the public portion of the hearing, it's up to him.
Okay, I'm, yeah, I'm just here to, to help this process along. We, we just moved into the house and on the day that we were.
Since you're speaking, I'm gonna swear you in and then we'll just figure when you're gonna speak, but you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, on the, on the day that we were, uh, closing on our house, we realized that there was this issue that had come up and we had our, um, you know, we had thought we had gone through all of the, um, uh, you know, our title company and we had, we had gotten in touch with the town board and didn't, there didn't seem to be any issues with the house at that time. Um, we, we bought the house, uh, I mean, it's a, it's a great looking house, the, it looks like the, the front of it has been on there for a lot longer. Um, we, you know, we appreciate it because we have small kids too that are coming home from school, they have friends in the neighborhood, we love the neighborhood that we've moved into, our kids have friends there, they're coming over to our house and, um, you know, knocking on the door to play. Um, so, so we, um, we were sort of surprised by this when it came up, we didn't know that this was gonna be an issue, um, when we had, when we had bought the house and we, we are just hoping it can get resolved, uh, soon because I'm sure like how it looks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, if there's nothing else, Mr. Dugan, um, we will, uh, open this portion. Well, first of all, board members, do you have any question of the applicant or the current owner?
Yeah.
Um, I do, um. Sir, when you put this cover over the porch, did you also extend the porch outward?
Mr. Dugan, you're muted. Can you, can you unmute your set? There you go. Thank you.
Um, when the, when we placed the, yeah, when we, when we were planning the, um, the cover, it was meant to, it was designed to cover what was a, an existing, uh, entryway area. So there was, there was no, uh, there was no planned extension. However, the reason I, I, I say no plan is that the measurements themselves, um, uh, will, will, will tell a, a better story, if, if I may, um, I, I may, may I, um, show them? Are, are they, I think they're part of the record. Um, but if, if perhaps the plans, uh, I can, I can, I can show them, that might help, because the.
If you wanna share your screen, you can show us whatever you'd like to show us.
Okay, let me do that.
You know, what I'm specifically referring to, sir, in Mr. Bridges' memo was the front, back, it's front, there were prevailing front yard setback. The existing was twenty-nine point five feet and the proposed is twenty-four. So I'm thinking something got extended in the front of the house.
It, it looks like the existing front door is the original location of the door.
It is.
And the covered portion was built out in front of it, including the porch.
On the survey.
Um, if I, I, I will, uh, if I may, let me share my, my screen. You'll see, this was the, this is the existing front, um, and as you see the, the stairs and, and where they extend to, and in the, in the current version up here, um, the awning was designed just to provide, um, cover to the, the stairs. So there was, there's no, um, it doesn't en- en- encroach any further into the yard from, um, in, in it, in its design.
It has to, because the exist, the, the existing front door didn't move. Is that correct?
Um, the existing front door.
The door and the shutters and that, that's.
That was, the vestibule area, is that what you're?
Yes.
Speaking of, yes, no, that did not move. The, but you'll, you'll see the, the stairs that are in the, in the, um, in the original. Uh, that, sorry, that's what I'm, I'm looking at, the.
Well, but the columns, the columns and the roof itself extended out beyond the existing front door.
Well, yes, that's, 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 uh, that's what it's designed to do, to, to, for the.
Obviously, but it didn't, so it did, it did further compromise the front yard setback.
Um.
But did the stairs move?
Is that?
It's like the stairs were redone.
It says a redone.
Question is, did the stairs move? It did. Did they get bigger?
Did they get longer?
They get longer and.
Yeah.
Wider?
Yes, that's the question.
No, not from, that was, no, I don't believe they did, and looking at the, the, the plans and the measurements, we don't have that going any, uh, that was not, no, because that, that was not, it, it, the shelter was, was designed exactly to meet the, um, the existing footprint.
Didn't meet the existing footprint, you extended it.
Sorry, I'm, 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 my, I'm sorry, like, you know, honestly, the terminology escapes me.
That's fine.
Uh, does it, 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 it was meant to provide just the, a, a, a shelter with columns on the stairs. The stairs were redone and the, um, so the front, the exterior front, uh, a path there was also made to make, uh, the paving was done to make it, uh, to go all the way around the other side as well. So i- it's a little, maybe a little, or maybe a little difficult, um, in, in my explanation, that's the way it is that occurred. That's why I'm, I'm really relying on the images to tell the story, um, and, and, and in tone, and that's why I'm, I'm pointing to say, the footprint really was, the shelter was designed to provide minimal coverage from the elements when at the entrance, nothing more. In terms of the inches and extensions beyond what, I can only point to what the, the, the calculations offer, um, and, and why the setback, the, the setback cut requirements are, um, the existing setback, however, was prior to, like that data, that, that twenty-nine point five existed prior to the, uh, development. This is not, this was not a, uh, this was not caused by, this, this is, that, is that, this was grandfathered in, I, I believe, that's, that's the right term. This was not a crea, our creation.
Michael, it, it appeared, it appeared that the front steps, at least from the photographs, and I looked at the house, but I didn't look at detail, but it appears from the, the photo on the top that the steps were covered, but it doesn't look like they extended out. There are columns alongside it, and so it looks like the steps may have been covered, but they remain where they were, but the roof overhang, obviously, and the two new columns projected further out.
Okay, so that accounts for the five and a half feet further encroachment?
It would seem to.
I ask a, a question?
Sure.
Uh, if, if the house was just sold, if you just had a closing, there wasn't a new survey, uh, pulled at the time for the closing?
There should be.
Because that, that would capture the existing condition, um, rather than this sketch that is, uh, showing it, it's showing a twenty-eighteen, uh, survey, which I guess was before the porch.
That, um, would be beyond, um, this, this, like the scope of, um, my scope. It's the, the buyers would, would, would opt, uh, will have the option of a survey.
Hi, Mr. Dugan, you gotta speak louder.
The buyers would have the option of the survey. I'm sorry, it's, uh, I'm, it's, uh, it's beyond my, it's beyond my scope. I mean.
Bernice, it's possible that the buyers may have uh, asked the original surveyor to just recertify to, to them, and perhaps when he checked the house, the work hadn't been done, I don't know, but I'm not sure.
Okay, I mean, I, I agree with, um, what, uh, Steve is saying. It looks like it's just built right on top of, you know, it was reconstruction, reconstructed on the footprint of the original porch and landing, um, you know, the brick set of stairs. It looks like it was just placed.
Does the buyer know if he's got a survey? Is he still in the zoom?
Sorry, I just had to unmute myself there. Um, I, sorry, what was the question again?
Bernice? Did you, did you get your?
Okay, at, at the time you purchased the home, as, as for, for your, um, as, as part of your, uh, process, um, did you order a new survey?
I, I don't remember that specifically. I'd have to ask whether our, our lawyers and, uh, our agent there about that. Um, but if, if that was, um, yeah, I don't, sorry, I don't remember the specific details about that right now. Maybe Derek has them.
There, uh, Chairman Colin?
Yes.
As part of the, uh, violation, I did measure the porch, um, the dimensions, uh, the existing slab that's out there matches what was on the survey. I think you're correct in, uh, the assumption that it was basically just veneered with other, you know, like brick coat facing. Um, it didn't expand. You can see clearly here the extension of the new roof, uh, it's darker gray than the existing roof shingles. Um, so that is the subject of this evening's discussion, that little, uh, portico porch, um.
Sure, okay.
But it is five and a half feet out, um, the porch was existing and.
So it's the portico, it's the portico that's five and a half feet out, not the porch?
Well, the porch, I get.
Well, let me, let me ask the question of Derek. Did, did the, the brickwork, the porch without the portico, did that even count before the portico went in? And, you know.
Standing, um, the front yard setback used to be twenty-five feet, you know, when we went to the prevailing front yard setback.
Yes.
It, it's now different, you know, if it, the prevailing is five feet greater or less than the prescribed setback than the prevailing rules. So this was legal when it was done, um, if the setback was still twenty-five feet, they would be allowed an eight-foot encroachment into the front yard setback and it would still work, but it's the fact that the prevailing setback, when it's overlaid on an existing, you know, street with houses that have been there fifty years, you know, it, it just changes the, the calculus from when the house was built, so.
So the, the rules changed, not the, not the porch part of it.
Yes, sir.
That's what it is. Thanks.
Good point, Michael. Uh, any other questions of the applicant or the witness? Okay, uh, Mr. Dugan, we're gonna open this up to the public for comment. Um, Claudia, is there, is there anyone here that's indicated they'd like to speak on behalf of this application?
I don't see any hands, but if you wanna let them know to raise their hand.
Okay, if anybody would like to speak to this application, please indicate that by, uh, at the bottom of your screen, raising your hands and we'll let you into the meeting.
No hands.
Okay. All right, so we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Uh, Mr. Dugan, before we go into executive session, do you wanna say anything else?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, well, thank, uh, I, I do wanna say thank you, um, to all members, and particularly to the zoning thing for the helping, uh, putting this together, it's, uh, quite an extensive process, but, um, I, I do appreciate the, the work and, uh, and thoughtfulness I go into it, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, board members, let's discuss the application. Any comments, questions?
Um, the, you know, the last comment or explanation from Derek helped me a lot, um. If the size of the porch didn't change, but the rules changed, that means when he put a portico on top of it, and it had to come back here, come here, um, he didn't make it any worse, but it triggered an application for variance, if I'm, if I'm understanding correct.
Well, let me see if I understand it, Michael. Derek, the, the setback was measured to the front door or to the edge of the steps?
No, it's measured to the, uh, the front door.
So.
Yeah.
The porch now, or this portico, is a structure, now the setback is measured to the face of the portico.
Yes, sir.
So the, so the, 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 the front setback did in fact change, because the structure was built in the setback or in the front of the house.
That little five and a half foot extension, yes, sir.
Yeah, so it basically was extended, but it wasn't extended beyond what currently existed for the front steps and that small landing. It was all built on that.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And the, if I'm understanding correctly, the, the original steps was pre-existing and conforming until prevailing got imposed, if I'm understanding correctly.
Yes, sir.
Because it, yeah, it, it wasn't even a pre-existing non-conforming. It existed and conformed, and then prevailing came in at a later date.
You're correct, I believe, yeah.
Yeah. So, those are my thoughts on it.
Sure, okay, good.
Didn't get made any worse. The rule got tighter.
Right, right.
I move, will you approve it?
I second that.
Yeah, okay, what about, uh, the condition of a building permit?
Correct.
Yes, since you put it on the record, and it's not resolved, I would say condition it.
Yeah. Well, it's something the owner should have, so he gets a, an approval of it, so when he, when and if he goes to sell a house, uh, he gets all the documentation he needs.
And board members, are, are you thinking this would be a hardship, uh, variance or, um, And board members, are you thinking this would be a hardship variance or a C2 variance?
I, I don't know. I can stretch it into a C2.
Okay.
You know. It's not related, it's not related to, you know, top, to crop, to property or, you know, physical features really.
Okay. Thank you.
So I would move it as, you know, I think it should be a one. I think Steve moved it, right?
Except that.
Okay, I mean, it should be, be a two, excuse me.
C2, yeah. Any further discussion of the motion? Okay. Claudia, do you like to call a roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
German Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Enjoy your home.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along. Our next case is case number Z22-099, excuse me, is that Z? Z21-099, 871 Mount Lucas Road Block, 1001 Lot 4 in the OR1 Zone. Derek, can you give us your memo?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Robert, Ellen, Cogan are the owners and applicants of 871 Mount Lucas Road. It's in the OR1 Zone in the former Princeton Township. They're seeking a use variance pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-70D2 to permit the expansion of existing non-conforming single-family use so as to permit the conversion and connection of a detached garage to an accessory dwelling unit. The existing single-family use is not permitted in the OR1 Zone, and the applicant has requested C1 variances for the associated setback variances that are incurred with the slight expansion of the house. Subject is located in the OR1 Zone, which is the office research zone, and it's in section 10B331 states a non-conforming use shall not be enlarged in area substantially changed in character to another, to other than a conforming use. So that's the reason we are here tonight. The subject is non-complying with regard to the 217,800 square foot lot area, which I believe is four acres. The existing lots 34,455 square feet. It's not compliant with lot width requirement of 330, existing's 115. It's not compliant with lot depth, which is also 330, existing's 296 feet. It's not compliant with the lot frontage requirement of 165, the existing is 115. And the, the building itself is not compliant with regards to the 60-foot right yard setback, which the existing's 13 feet, and the left setback is also 60 feet on the side, and it, the garage does not meet that, it's setback at 31 feet. So the applicant is seeking to convert the garage into an accessory dwelling unit, which will contain a kitchen, living room, full bath, and a laundry on the first floor, and a bedroom on the second floor. The proposed ADU has three habitable rooms and requires one parking space. Storage shed is being added to the left side of the ADU. And second floor deck is proposed at the rear of the ADU. The two parking spaces required for the principal dwelling and the one for the ADU will be accommodated in the existing turnaround space off of the driveway. A proposed ADU will connect, in addition, will connect the ADU to the principal house by providing a hallway between the ADU and the principal house. And the first floor of the, the main house will be expanded by five feet along the northern elevation, providing an expanded dining room, kitchen, and mudroom, and the roof line will be raised to provide more living area on the second floor. As I mentioned earlier, the property is in the OR1 Zone in the existing use. Where it must be, no variance may be granted under that section unless, or granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and public of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The following items should be considered when reviewing the, the use variance. The applicant has a burden of proof demonstrating special reasons for granting of the variance as well as the negative criteria. There are numerous bulk requirements connected with the conversion of the garage and the, the expansion of the main house. The principal dwelling has a right side yard requirement of 60 feet, and the proposed is 18 feet to the first and second floor addition. The right side setback to the new front porch setback 60, the proposed is 21. The right side setback to the connection between the ADU and the principal dwelling is 60 feet, the proposed is 50. And the left side setback for the addition between the ADU and the principal dwelling is 56 feet. I mean, the lots basically, they almost overlap the side yard setbacks because the lot's size, you know, smaller than required for the zone. The ADU requires a a side yard setback for the storage shed, should be 60 feet, the proposed is 24 feet. It also requires a setback for the new deck, the requirement is 60, the proposed is 39. Requires a parking setback, the requirement's 60. The two spaces in front of the garage, the setback's 32 feet. And then the required setback for the parking space off of the driveway, the setback's again 60 feet, and the existing is 10. So they request a consideration under the C1 criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to address them. Thank you.
More members? Okay. I don't believe this requires historic review, did it?
No, sir.
Okay, so we can go on to the applicant. Who'll be presenting this?
Hi there. My name is Ellen Cogan, and this is my husband, Robert Cogan. I apologize for lighting. We're an event. We, we decided to go weeks before we knew this was going to be our court day, so apologies. But can you please promote our planner, Paul Ritchie? He's on this call. Paul?
Claudia, did you hear that?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, I see that Paul joined.
Mrs. Cogan, why don't we swear you all in right now? So
Sure.
Then Mrs. Cogan and Mr. Ritchie, do you all swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, in August, my father passed away, and now my mother is living alone. And we have a very small, modest house on a normal residential street. We have an unfinished garage that has like a little attic space on top of it. So we want to make her, give her, you know, give her a better life by moving in with us. So we just really want to fix up our garage and give her a place to live where she can be independent, but yet close to her family.
Okay. Do you want to just run through the plan with us for a minute? Explain it?
Yeah, Paul, do you want me just to introduce it?
Let me introduce the plan. It may be easier because we're located. Do you want to qualify me, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ritchie, you're a professional planner in the state of New Jersey, correct?
I am.
All right, and have you been accepted as an expert witness in planning by other land use boards?
Yes, in, in over 200 communities.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, what's your pleasure?
Well, I would accept Mr. Ritchie as a planner. Are you going to test, are you going to speak on the plan itself? Um, my, my primary focus is to testify for the variances, but I was going to testify to the plan since I'm the only professional as part of this call. That's fine. I'll, we'll, we'll allow. That's fine. Please continue. Uh, thank you. If, if I may, I was just going to start with a, a quick planning exhibit just to put this application in, in context, and then I was going to bring the plan up, if that's acceptable. Yes.
Mr. Ritchie, why don't we make this an exhibit then? Are there multiple sheets here, or is it one sheet?
There's, there's three sheets. The first sheet is an aerial photograph. It shows zoning information as well as existing land use, and it's followed by two sheets of photographs taken by myself.
All righty, so we'll call this collectively Exhibit A1. Thank you.
Thank you. This exhibit was prepared in a geographic information system. It, it zoomed in on the subject property, which is outlined in blue. Sorry, but my labels didn't draw, didn't draw. So Mount Lucas Road runs from the, the, the top center by the, the subject property, and then Herrentown Road runs, as I'm moving the cursor to the, to the middle left of the photo, of the, of the image. North is directly straight up in this image. You can see in the upper left, we're in the northern part of the municipality, the former township. You can see Montgomery Township being shown in the upper left, so we're very close to the initial lot line. The, the purpose of this exhibit is to show that, that despite the fact that that the subject property is zoned OR1, that's a district that permits office and, and research uses. And sorry, I believe it's five acres, if you, if, not to correct the zoning officer, I believe it's a five-acre zone, if you, if you, if you do the, the math on the, the square footage. Despite that, you can see in the, in, in yellow, yellow represents residential land uses. There are, there's a number of single-family residential land uses. I count them, one, two, three, subject property, four, five, six, seven. And in blue, that represents a, a public land use, despite the fact that it appears to be residential, maybe, maybe owned by the, the, the use across the street, which is the Penn Medicine, Princeton House Behavioral Health Facility, and then additional residential uses. And I'm going to speak to your, your master plan as well, but just to, to quickly let the board know that you, you recently submitted a, a draft master plan that was released October 31st. That master plan has not been adopted, but I'll, I'll speak to it more in a moment. The master plan that has been drafted for, for public comment does recommend that the subject property be zoned for residential land use. And the reason that, that that's important is that, as you're aware, all residential districts are permitted to have an accessory dwelling unit. And that's, and that's what the applicant is looking for in this context. If I may, I'll, I'll move on. Now I have eight pictures largely of the, the subject property in the surrounding area. Here is a picture of the subject property taken a few days ago. You can see the detached accessory garage, which is proposed to be improved with the accessory building to the left and the main portion of the house to the right. Picture number two shows a zoomed-in area of that accessory garage. Picture number three shows it from the rear yard. Again, the accessory garage on the right and the, the, the main residence on the left. And then picture four shows the existing side yard setback to the nearest residential structure. I'll, I'll give some specifics on that in a moment, but it's approximately, I believe, 32 feet. And then picture number five is, is to show that, you know, there, there is ample parking to meet your, your zoning code for the accessory dwelling unit. Two parking spaces fit in the, the the area that I'm showing you in the right, that, that bulb-out area, and then two parking spaces fit behind the, the attached accessory structure, you know, and then you have a throat on the driveway that, that could foot additional spaces. But the four spaces is all that's need to meet your, your, your all-street parking requirements. Picture number six is, it's difficult to, to see very well, but this is the most proximate home to the site. I measured in the GIS the distance from the, the existing detached garage to this home, and it's slightly over 75 feet at its closest point. And picture number seven is, is the house to the, most proximate to the south, and then the, the, the Penn Medicine facility across the street. And I'm going to switch to the plan set. This plan set was prepared by, by Fortunato Architecture. It's dated 10/10/23. It consists of, of five sheets. In the lower corner of the plan, there is a, a site plan that shows the improvements. Oops, excuse me. It's a little sensitive when you zoom in. Zoom out a little bit. Try to get that for you. Try to zoom in without it jumping to the next page. On the lower right of the image is a site plan. And here it shows that, that 32-foot setback to the adjoining property to the north that I just mentioned. So one thing from a planning standpoint is, as part of this proposal, any of the improvements aren't proposed to be located closer to, to any property lines. And as part of this, you know, the applicant has a small connection to the, to the, and I'll show that in the floor plan in a moment, that connects to the, to principal building. That's not the entire accessory structure, but, but a small portion of it to the rear, the front portion being open. They propose a, a deck addition on the, on the front and back. And, and there's an entrance in the side yard on the, on the right side of the, of the plan. And I'm just going to briefly really focus on the, on the accessory dwelling unit, which is the portion on the left, where it's connected by this mudroom, which I showed you. That's, that's the connection to the building. Consists of a bathroom, a laundry, a kitchen, and a dining area. There's entrance doors to the side, which is facing in the northerly direction, one to the rear. And there's a connection that you could come through, through the mudroom and a door from the, from the front of the house into the mudroom as, as well. And as part of this, which I thought was nice, here are the elevations, the front elevation the applicant proposes, the completely recide, the home updated. There's a, there's a, a, a front, like kind of a open porch feature that's proposed, both on the front, the main house and the, and the accessory dwelling. And then the remainder of the house, you know, there's the doorway I, I, I showed that's facing to the north, the, the adjacent properties. And so the whole house has been redesigned. The entire house would be recided, improved, and, and, and finished.
Excuse me?
Yes.
My report was based on plans dated 7/18/22. This application was deemed complete prior to these October plans even being submitted to this office.
Let me zoom in. These are the plans that I was provided.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Not your.
We just, we, we just slightly updated it. There's really no difference.
Go with the approval that the plans that were here from a year ago are what's being approved tonight. If there's any other variances, you'll have to come back. I don't know. I mean, it's a big, they're different than what was, what was reviewed.
Yes, that, that is in fact the case. Once our zoning officer reviews them, these current plans, if, if things change that require additional variances, he's correct, you'll have to come back.
Okay, my apologies. I didn't realize. I thought it was minor nature. I, I didn't understand.
Okay. If, if I may move on to, to the planning proofs, we're seeking, as indicated by the zoning officer, the D2 expansion of a non-conforming use variance as well as several bulk variances that, that he described. For the bulk variances, we're, we're seeking those under the C1 hardship. I'm also going to relate this property to a residential zone in Princeton of a comparable size because it, it's my opinion as a planner that, you know, this zone, while this property is located in an office residential zone of a five-acre size, that this is an undersized lot where not just the subject property, but it, but adjoining properties are, are residential. I, I believe that this site could benefit from improved zoning by looking at other residential districts. Uh, I, I believe that this site could benefit from improved zoning by looking at other residential districts uh, in Princeton. Um, for, for the, for the D2 use variance, I think the board is aware that we don't have to demonstrate that we are initially entitled um, to the, to the residential home in an office zone, but we need to essentially meet the same positive and negative criteria. As a D1 use variance, would reconcile that the negative criteria should be reviewed with greater liberality, considering the fact that this residential use has been here for some time. Um, um, regarding the master plan, I mean, I looked at your two thousand seventeen master plan. Um, the issues that it identified facing the community were uh, providing, the ones most relevant to this application, at least, were providing affordable housing, providing opportunities for middle-income housing, uh, and maintaining a range of housing opportunities to ensure a diverse population at all age and uh, income levels. Your, your two thousand and twenty-three draft master plan specifically says the OR1T zone on the east side of Mount Lucas Road, north of the intersection with Herrentown Road, which I just showed as being the subject area, should be changed to a residential district. So your draft master plan, I recognize this as somewhat of a, a admiralary, admirallary, excuse me, I can't speak very well tonight, in your zoning. Um, uh, clearly, the OR1 district is not intended for, for residential use of a, a five-acre, that, um, the standards associated were a five-acre zone for a, a property that's zero-point-seven uh, nine acres in area, the subject lot. Um, your R4 district um, has a minimum lot size of, of thirty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy square feet. Um, our property is thirty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-five square feet, and that district most li- most closely uh, shows the intent of the zone plan for lots similarly sized to the subject property. In your R4 zone, it requires a, a front yard setback of twenty-five feet, where the applicant provides a hundred and five feet. It requires a side yard setback of fifteen feet for each side, where the applicant provides eighteen feet and thirty-two feet, thirty-two feet being beside, adjacent to the, the accessory dwelling. A rear yard setback of fifteen feet, where the applicant provides a hundred and forty-one feet, a building height of thirty-five feet, well, this is under a building setback, the height ratio of one to one-point-five, which is um, largely unchanged and, and in compliance, and F A R of fifteen percent, where ten-point-nine percent is proposed. So i- it's my planning uh, testimony that um, applying uh, the R4 standard, or something s- similar to the R4 standards, is a better zoning uh, for this tract. This is a residential property that's been here for a number of years. It's on an undersized lot, and it's unlikely that you would see uh, a property that's been residential and in a residential neighborhood um, to revert to an office use uh, in this setting, particularly when you have a draft master plan recommending a zoning change. A- as your zoning officer indicated, um, there is no developable area on the subject property under the current zoning because of the required setbacks of sixty feet. Uh, we have a lot width of a hundred and fifteen feet, so the subject property currently has no developable area on it. And this qualifies for a C1A hardship uh, due to the narrowness uh, of the lot. So this is a, a unique, in an exceptional situation, uh, arising to a, a residential property which is zoned non-residential. Here again, the applicant is looking to establish an, an accessory dwelling unit, which is permissible in all residential zones. Again, the master plan supports residential zoning, where the draft master plan supports residential zoning uh, for this site. Uh, the applicant is not proposing development any closer uh, to adjoining uh, lot lines. Um, and for, for all these reasons, I believe that this application um, advances several purposes of the municipal land use law. Uh, Purpose G uh, provides sufficient space in an appropriate location to meet the needs of, of, of New Jersey citizens, Purchase uh, M, resorts in a more efficient uh, use of land. I also believe, under the context of the draft master plan, that's all, this, this site continues to be particularly well-suited for residential use as well, which promotes uh, Criteria A, the municipal land use law. I- in terms of the, the negative criteria, I believe that the variances can be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good. The applicant is not building any closer uh, to uh, lot lines, parking is satisfied, and the proposed bulk controls are consistent uh, with lots of this size elsewhere uh, in Princeton. So I don't believe it would have a, a substantial negative impact uh, on the intent and purpose of your zoning ordinance. Hopefully, I didn't speak too quickly. Um, that's largely my, my direct testimony.
Thank you. Um, I just have, uh, I just wanna run something by both uh, Derek Bridger and, and our attorney Karen Casey. The, the fact that we're, we're, that, or the website is showing drawings that were just done last month, and, and the drawings which uh, Mr. Bridger reviewed are a year old, and there are changes. Um, I, I, I'm kind of concerned about this, because people, the public, or, you know, and our zoning officer relied on what was submitted, and in fact, it's not what is being presented tonight. I guess one question is of the applicant, is the architect here?
The architect is not here, but you can ask me questions, because I worked very closely with him. I can tell you what the exact differences are. We just, because of financial constraints, we decided to not expand the dining room and not expand the kitchen. That's the only difference. I, and again, because my mom had to move in, we had to make cuts somewhere to accommodate the construction.
It, it's, I understand that. I'm just concerned about what we're present, what, what we posted on the website and what we're reviewing, and what our zoning officer's memo and uh, is based on. Is that Karen? What, what do we do in a case like this? Do we, do we give Mr. Bridger a chance to review it again and comment? Can we act, can we act on this tonight?
Well, you know, I, I think you can act on it, but I think, as Derek's pointed out, the approval, it's gonna be very clear in the resolution that this approval is based on the architecture plans that were submitted with the application. So, uh, I don't know what the applicant is gonna do, because they don't wanna build that, they wanna make some changes to that. So, either.
The footprint is the same, though. The footprint is exactly the same. I, I apologize, the footprint is exactly the same. We're not going further to the left or further to the right. We just essentially are not expanding the kitchen and dining room. That's the only change between last year and this year.
I'm not trying to be argumentative. I understand that the changes are minimal. Unfortunately, what was reviewed and what's posted on the website are different. And, and I just wanna make sure that if in the event that someone comes to the township and says, wait a second, you know, these are different, I just wanna make sure you're gonna get the correct resolution of this.
Well, Steve, if the footprint is not changing, then why, why? Uh, it is changing, okay, well, that's.
The proposed plans have a huge deck in the rear yard of six hundred and fifty square feet. They have a side deck entrance to the basement. The connection between the house and the garage is smaller than it was before, which I guess is probably all right, cuz it's subsumed into the variances of the internal hallway that was connecting the house to the, to the garage, but.
Well, then I guess we need to talk to the applicant. What is it you wanna build? Our Mr. Ritchie.
Yeah, I just, I, yeah, please, go.
Um, m- Mr. Chairman, if, if you agree with my arguments, and the board agrees with my arguments, that the R4 zoning is appropriate for this site, um, you could, I, I believe you could consider as part of your resolution, applying R4 standards for this site uh, moving forward, if the town so happened to rezone it later. Um, you know, you know, the, the way the law typically rules, if something is to your benefit, you usually get, you're entitled to that as well.
I'd have to rely on our attorney and zoning officer to make that determination.
Yeah, but, but, but Mr. Ritchie, the issue really is, your clients want to build the house that are on the plans that you started to describe until Mr. Bridger uh, corrected you and said, well, this is not what was presented or filed with him. So, if the applicant wants to build the house that is on these updated plans, then the point is well-taken that the, our, our uh, zoning officer hasn't seen those plans.
Okay, the only reason I mention it is because uh, I don't believe that you require a site plan approval for a single-family house. It's the variance relief that's stemming this application. So, to the extent that that could be reviewed under, you know, appropriate standards for this lot, and then Mr. Bridger could, you know, analyze from u- under those standards, if they didn't.
Yes, Michael, he's done.
We'd have to be in front of the board again.
Michael, do you wanna add to this?
Um, yeah, I, I just, on the, on the point that Mr. Ritchie made, we're not being asked to judge it on R4, we're being asked to grant variances based on OR. We're not taking any action related to R4, so I don't think any decision or any resolution would even reference that.
Okay. So, I mean.
I think we're, no, go on, Steve.
No, my, my question, Karen, is can we, can we act on this?
Well, I, I think you can act on it, but the problem for this applicant is this was reviewed with respect to variance relief and um, any related issues based on plans that were submitted a year ago. So, I have to think that the applicant wants to build the home that's on the current plans, right?
I, I do, I wanna, I, sorry, I didn't realize the deck is considered footprint, and that's just, I, I wasn't aware. We decided to add a deck, because I didn't realize that would, the reason I added a deck is because my architect said, because it's not zoned correctly, I would have to get an additional variance for that, so we put that into this one. So, again, I'm sorry, I, I, I really didn't know, it was, I was an innocent mistake.
All right, well, we sort of answered one question, which is, it would appear that you would need additional variance relief. So, one solution is, is it possible, Derek, to, I don't know what the agenda is next month, can it be carried to next month's meeting? To allow you to look at it, to determine if they need additional variance relief?
Well, we do have, that's interesting, we, if, if we do in fact have a special meeting in December, is there enough time, Derek, to look at this and put everything together to get it on that meeting?
Uh, we could do it for the thirteenth, but um, these plans that were submitted are out of scale, so your architect would have to submit plans that are to scale, and I'll do my best, we could probably get it done by the.
We couldn't do it at the, if the meeting is gonna be on the sixth, we couldn't do it.
But the, the thirteenth, we could. I mean, it, it's, there's not a lot of time. The League of Municipalities is next week, I'm out of the office three days, and then uh, Thanksgiving, um.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not here on the, actually, I'm here. I'm, I'm available on the thirteenth, I'm not available, the thirteenth of December. Are you talking about the thirteenth? You're not talking about the thirteenth.
Special meeting was the sixth of December, and uh, the regular meeting's the thirteenth.
Yeah, I'm, I'm available for the thirteenth and the sixth. All right, but it's, it's um, so logically, we would have to get, we would have to get the, the current drawings to our zoning officer, and he's gotta review them and, and determine if there are additional variances. And then, does it have to be, Karen, does it have to be re-noticed?
Uh, I don't think so. I think what we're gonna do tonight is announce that this application is being carried. So, if anybody is watching tonight, is interested, then they will um, understand that it's being carried now to December thirteenth. The plans, when they are, I guess, rescaled for Mr. Bridger, um, those will be posted on the website, so if there's any neighbors who wanna look at it, they can see it, so um, I don't think it has to be re-noticed, unless, well, I'll, uh.
There's different variances, Karen.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well.
Well, I, I don't know what choice we have. I don't, I don't wanna delay this, I don't wanna delay the applicant, but I don't know if it's appropriate for us to act on it without.
Derek, what, do you think that you would understand what the new uh, variances would be in time for them, this applicant, to notice again?
If I, if I got the plans in, I, I'm not in next week. I mean, Monday's already booked, I'm out Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and I'm in Friday, um, then Thanksgiving, it's really, I'm not sure. Uh, it's just tight, right? So I could give you a clear answer, but always come up in this job, and uh, you can anticipate them, so.
Well, what, what does the applicant wanna do? How uh, how attached are you to these uh?
It's my mistake. It, it's, it's my mistake. I thought it was a minimal difference, so that was poor judgment on my end. So handle it the way you think is appropriate, so.
All right.
Look, if you want what you want, then it may go to January. I can't promise, I don't wanna make you re-notice and waste money. Um, it's just, I'm being honest, there's not a lot of time to get this done. It's not a lot of work, but.
I, I understand, I apologize.
What you want, I suggest you go for it, i- if it makes more sense, um, then I would make that suggestion.
So then, really, we don't, the applicant, we anticipate the applicant is going to have to re-notice. We just don't know, we don't have a date yet for them to notice. And we don't know what additional variances they need, so.
Yes.
That information will have to be given to them, and then they'll have a new date, and then they'll revise their notice accordingly.
You can get the plans in as soon as possible. I'll do my best to look at them and get back to you as soon as I can.
Of course, we will do that right away. We already have them ready to go.
And make, please make sure they're to scale, thank you.
Okay, I will double-check with the architect tomorrow.
Okay, all right, so we're going to carry this application. Is that correct?
Well, it's, it's, yeah, well, yes, carried, but to, to a date that we don't know yet, so it is gonna be re-noticed.
But we're not gonna have it, we're not gonna continue the uh, hearing this evening on this application. Okay. Okay.
Will, can I contest, will the testimony of our planner need to be like, is it, are we gonna be, restarting this from the very beginning?
No, I, I, no, I mean, the way, the way I'm, I, I would anticipate that your planner would simply address the new variances, and, and the board would get to see your new plan, and um, I don't think you need to start from scratch, no. No, we're, we're continuing to try and address now any changes that are being made in uh, what you wanna build.
Okay, we'll resubmit plans, uh, okay, plans to scale, same instruction.
I'm.
Yes, we'll submit new plans right away.
Okay, got it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Apologies.
That's quite all right, but thank you. Okay. All right, well, be alone. Sorry about that, but, okay, um, my third hearing in the night is uh, Twenty Linden Lane, Block thirty-three point oh-two, Lot five-seventy in the R4 Zone. Derek, can you give us your memo, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, Amanda DeBazio and Timothy Caldwell are the owners and applicants of Twenty Linden Lane. They seeking a C1 and C2 variance, request permit to development of a parking space, an exception to the required twenty-five-foot front yard setback for parking, and a driveway width requirements, and reconstruction alteration of a one-car garage, an exception to the required setbacks. Properties located in the R4 Zone of the former borough. Existing single-family use is permitted as a right. The subject lots complying with regard to the um, applicable bulk requirements. The property itself, the house, is non-compliant with regard to the um, the garage is non-compliant with regard to the five yards five-foot setback, excuse me, existing is one-point-eight. The rear yard setback's also five, and the existing is point-six-six feet. Um, property is in the historic preservation zone, so Elizabeth will have some comments following this memo. Um, applicant is proposing to reconstruct the existing garage in the same footprint, but with a different sidewalls and roof dimensions, the following variances are required. Following variances are required. Rear yard setback requirements five are proposed is zero point six six feet. Um, side yard setback requirements, five feet proposed is one point eight feet. The parking variance uh for the, in the driveway um. In exception to. Seventeen A four oh three I. Three, um, the driveway does not meet the um required width at the property line, which is ten feet. And fourteen feet at the curb. The new driveway uh does not meet those standards. Um, the applicant will need to apply to council to expand the driveway opening in the public right away. The following variances are required. Um, the front yard parking setback requirements twenty five feet to propose. Is plus or minus seven and a half feet. The driveway width at the property line is ten. The proposed is eighteen and a half um. Driveway width at the curb line um is is limited to fourteen feet, then proposed is eighteen and a half. And I just note that the applicant recently purchased the house and expanded the third floor to provide additional living area. The existing driveway consists of two macadam strips with a concrete strip in the middle. Um, it's partially removed already and is proposed to be removed. New pavers are proposed behind the house and. Provide access to the garage. The existing garage will be demolished and a new similarly dimensional structure will be constructed in its footprint. Print um, parking along this block of Linden Lane is primarily located on the sides of houses with driveways leading to garages. And parking behind the house. There's only one house with parking directly in front. Of the house. The board should weigh the applicability of the C one variance request as it relates to the parking in this case. Given the amount of site disturbance involved with this proposal, the applicant should consider a variance free application or alternative by designing the garage. And driveway on the opposite side of the house. Um, those are my comments. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Uh, I do have a question. So so when the applicant says he's rebuilding the garage. And he, but he's changing the dimensions and he's moving it. He's not rebuilding it on the same footprint.
I thought he was.
Well, maybe we can, we can hear from him, but you said he was changing the dimensions, the previous.
The geometry of the roof. So I mean, you could repair it in place, but once you demolish it and change it, you have to get a variance to. To construct it back in exception to the setbacks.
Okay, and and it's no longer going to be a garage.
I. I would let the applicant speak to that.
Okay, that's fine. It's 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 very confusing. Okay. Alright, um. Board members, any questions of Mr. Bridger? Okay, um, Mr. Kennedy. Wait, 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 I'm sorry.
You want to hear from Elizabeth?
Yes, please, Elizabeth.
Elizabeth, we'll just swear you win. Uh, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Um, so the property on Linden Lane is located in the suggested. Uh, tree streets dark district. Which is listed in the master plan. Um, it is a residential neighborhood. Uh, with a wide variety of nineteen and early twentieth century houses and some new newer homes in this neighborhood. Um, this application came before HPC at their September eighteen, two thousand twenty two meeting. The commission really concentrated on two aspects of this project, which was um, the reconstruction of the garage. Which we understood was being reconstructed on the same footprint, but it was changing its roof. Um, design. I'm not sure if it's increased in height, but the roof is now asymmetrical design. Um, and um, the the second component that they were looking at was the construction. Uh, what we were told at the meeting is that the parking spaces in the front are really to accommodate two cars. And to enlarge the curb cut to accommodate the in and out of those vehicles onto the um parking spaces. The commission did have questions about the asymmetry. They felt that it really was not in keeping with the. The original four square house, which has gone through uh modifications. Um, they had suggested perhaps. That they could relate that garage, which is, as they had talked about, was no longer going to be a garage. Um, but that they could perhaps put a small porch on the side so it can relate to their backyard area and the porch on the rear of the house. But the applicant said that they were maxed out as far as their floor area from their improvement. So that was not an option. And the angle of their roof was to really accommodate solar panels and they needed a larger um. Area to be able to accommodate as much solar as they were looking for. Um, and as far as the um. The parking space, the commission really worked with them to see. If they could move it to the other side, as Mr. Bridger had talked about, that was also their suggestion. They felt that there was plenty of room on the opposite side of their driveway. To perhaps put the driveway over there and with a single driveway instead of the double width and accommodate the two parking spaces. Uh, but the applicant really um. Was not in favor of that. They felt that it was going to encroach into the yard area, which they were allocating for their children. Um, and their landscape plan, which we had suggested flipping it over to the other side. Uh, they had. Proposed to remove the asphalt driveway and put tire lanes in and um. The HPC felt that they probably didn't even need that because the garage uh was not going to be used that. You know, the applicant had talked about the fact that that driveway on the side was very tight. It was hard for them to get in and out of their car. And that's why they were actually looking for the spaces at the end of the front. So um, the conclusion was that they really felt that. They couldn't justify changing the impact of the street skate to accommodate. These two parking spaces and widen the curb cut. When they felt that there was plenty of room on the property on the other side of the street. So um, that was really their conclusion. They felt that um, to move it on the left side would be less intrusive. And more in keeping with the street skate. So any questions? I'm happy to answer any of the board's questions.
I don't have any questions. Any board members, any questions of Ms. Kim?
I had a question on, did you mention solar panels on the garage?
Uh, that's what the applicant had indicated to uh HPC, that that's the reason that the angle. Of the roof was shaped that way. Also to accommodate some additional storage area, but really to get that larger um area. For solar panels.
Though unfortunately, our ordinance only permits solar panels on the dwelling. So it's it's a kink in the ordinance. So I don't know. If the board can grant that relief tonight or not.
Well, the the uh, if, does the notice call for any and all variances?
It does, it does. I mean, it seems to me, I'm I'm assuming that the. Issue with the solar panels. Could be tied, I guess, to concerns about the symmetry of the house. So I. I I don't see why it wouldn't fall within that catchall of, you know, any other related variances. So.
Good.
Alright, well, okay, I I guess. We can, we can get through that one then. Okay. Alright. Uh, should we continue? Derek, do you have anything else you want to add before we go on?
Uh, no, Your Honor, thank you.
Okay, alright, um, Mr. Kennedy, you're keep nodding your head. So you're you're. Ready to talk, so.
Absolutely. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If we could, before I I fully start, um, there's two people in the uh, in the attendee list. Uh, Jeff Fleischer has raised his hand, um, and then Tim Cantwell is our applicant. If we could move those two. Um, to Zoom users over as panelists as we as we start and. While um, they're coming over, I'll just briefly summarize and and say that both what Mr. Bridger and and Ms. Kim said is. Pretty good summary here. Um, this is a uh, uh, the one thing I'll say, um, a- as Ms. Kim said, this is a. The suggested tree streets historic district, so it is not uh yet a historic district. So we we did go for a. Courtesy review. Um. Uh, and I'll also note, as there was some testimony earlier about the revised master plan. Uh, I'll admit, I'm I'm someone who is you find here often and I I know where to look and uh, uh, this is one of those, uh, I guess, uh, suggested. Um, areas that uh, was a bit hard to find and and perhaps. Had we been coming uh next month after the master plan is is adopted potentially, that would not be the case. This is not. This district is is no longer on the list of, or will no longer be, at least as far as the draft goes. Uh, on the list of historic districts that would be subject to that uh type of of courtesy review. But as you, as you heard, there's two things. That we're talking about here tonight. Oddly, uh, neither of which really involve the home. And as you've driven by, you'll see a a revised home. Um, uh, at the site that was completely as of right, uh, did not require any type of review. And is nearing completion. Um, we're here to talk about uh, uh, the driveway. Uh, and uh, what was described as the garage building. And and as Mr. Bridger said, it is not proposed to be essentially enlarged. Or relocated. Uh, it is just to be rebuilt at the same location with the same setback variances that are there today. Uh, but as he noted with the, and and as Ms. Kim noted, with a a different roof design, which is entirely intended to give. A shielded from the neighbor uh and um, place to put solar panels. Uh, you'll hear about that, uh, and and uh, the angle uh is more appropriate to to catch the sun and provide a little bit more space. Uh, for those panels. Uh, you'll you'll see it's quite hidden from the street. Um. And you'll you'll imagine that it may have been impossible ever to get a car back there. Um, this is the story of a a growing family that has one of the few complying lot sizes in the neighborhood. So uh, as we discussed with HPC, we did study a bit whether there is room uh on the left side of the property. Uh, to to have an alternate driveway design. And and as you'll see, there is, and the question really is not, could you? But whether what we've proposed fits in better and is a better use of this property. Um, and we will take you on a a tour of the street to see that uh these kind of tight. Driveway, um, larger curb cut. And uh, some amount of partial front yard parking is quite common for the street. You'll also see that as we get closer to Nassau Street, the amount of pavement um. And parking uh grows and is excessive. And our our. Plan or our goal is to avoid that. It's to get a a second parking space and a pace, a space where someone could actually. Open a car door and get out um. In as small of a place as possible, in a way that fits the neighborhood, in a way that doesn't result in paving the really the only green and open space. Um, in uh, the neighborhood. So uh, with that, um. I see both of our witnesses here, oh. I just want to make sure, uh, Mr. Mr. Cantwell, I believe, got got bumped. Uh, I don't see him on the list anymore. Is he, is he uh?
He dropped. He's not there anymore.
Alright.
Oh, there he is.
There we have Tim. So uh, we'll have uh, uh, two witnesses tonight. Um, Ms. Casey, if we want to perhaps swear them both in at once, so we can start.
Sure, uh, Mr. Fleischer, Mr. Cantwell, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful? You're both muted, so if you could unmute.
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Alright, um, Tim, we'll we'll start with you and um, I'll, uh, as is our practice, uh, I've got a. Slide deck that we'll we'll go through with the applicant and then our architect. Um, it's alright for me to share that and to. Mark it um, as our one exhibit. I believe, Ms. Casey, it is including the slide that says, thank you. I believe it is twenty sheets.
Okay, thank you.
So, Tim, um, i- if you could briefly introduce yourself and your family and we can start talking about uh. Uh, your your time here uh in in Princeton and your uh, I I commute for which I am extremely jealous.
I can, I'm happy to. Hi, everyone. My name is Tim Cantwell. Nice to meet you tonight. Um, my family and I have lived in Princeton for about three and a half years. Uh, we moved here from San Francisco on way from um, New York City before that. We are thrilled to be in this community and to um, really make it our forever home. Um, for me, um, I am a founder and CEO of a technology company. Our office is at two thirteen Nassau Street, straight across from um, St. Paul's Church. Um, we use generative AI to create as built of um, real estate. And to help owners renovate faster. Um, my company has grown dramatically in the last three years. We currently employ a little over a hundred people. Um, Princeton's been a really great home for us. We have currently rented at the corner of Wiggins and Moore. We've been renting on a um. Yeah, duplex townhome for the last three and a half years. We've loved it here. Um, we have three children, um, Jesse, Jacob and Joy, um, four, two and four months. Uh, I'm extremely tired right now. On that, but um, I've bet a lot of you have been there too. Um, my wife is wonderful. Um, she is. Uh, has been an executive at Google for the last fifteen years. Uh, she's currently looking for uh, her next opportunity. Um, Murphy is our dog and we've been building. Uh, twenty Linden for the last uh year. We um specifically purchased this property. To be really close to town, to be close to my office, uh, and to um, have the um. Lot and a half. It's a, it's about um, one and a half lots wide compared to typical lot. Um, we looked for that for a couple of years and and found this place. We decided to renovate versus um, knocking down and building new, which I understand that we could have done um, in this location. Um, renovating for us was more true to the character of the neighborhood. Um, this home itself has only had, um, I believe, three owners in about a hundred and twenty years. It's amazing. Uh, the owner we bought it from had um, lived there since nineteen fifty one or something like that. Um, just really wonderful, uh, great kind of energy and bones in the home. Um, we kept the footprint of the home. We are proposing to keep the footprint of the garage completely unchanged on the footprint of the. Foundation of the home or the foundation of the garage. Um, and then we've just, we've updated it. Um, before I talk about the the renovations that we've made to the home, um, I also just want to know the reason why we're here, honestly. Um, is my wife says we need really good parking. Um, I know a lot of people have that as a concern. Uh, being on the corner of Wiggins and Moore, we've had a a one car spot um, right in front of our home. Um, it's been very challenging with three kids. Um, my wife was actually hit by a car about a year ago, um, while she was pregnant. She was crossing um, Wiggins. Uh, somebody came around the corner and um, hit her. We had a a couple of days in the emergency room and all that. Um, she was fine and the baby was fine, but it was it was a really big scare. Um, Linden, as you know, is a tree street, but it's also a a cut through street. You can see it here on the map. It is a. Kind of a a general cut through street. Um, there is no dotted line down the side of the road. It is not fully two cars wide. Um, and you do get more traffic down this street, um, not as much as Wiggins, obviously, but um, you still get a, you still get a lot of traffic here. So. Parking for our family was just really kind of key to um, how we were trying to do this and. Preserve the home, preserve the lot, preserve the neighborhood. Um. About the home, um, what are we doing and why are we doing solar and asymmetry and things like that? Um, my company as a technology company has been collaborating with a few other technology companies. Uh, and a few other um, climate focused, green energy focused um. Funds. Um, we are doing a net zero energy home. This home will um, consume zero energy for a hundred years. Um, we've achieved that with off the shelf construction materials. Um, we're going to do this as a case study for the for the company. Um, but really with off the shelf construction materials. Uh, with labors that you would find in any other construction site at the same cost as every other um, construction project. We've achieved a home um, that should require zero net energy for a hundred years. Um, we've done that through really tight um, envelope ceiling. Through more insulation and then through really efficient energy um appliances. Uh, like the um, heating and cooling, the water heater, the lighting, things like that. Um, the solar is not part of our project right now. We are going to monitor the home um, for a year. We're going to just monitor the meter. We've got it all modeled out. It should um, really balance. Um, we're going to model it out and then. Um, next year, the uh plan is to put solar on the garage. Um, the reason why we need that is because the garage is south facing. The home has this um. I don't know the technical architecture term for it. It's. It's a four square, so it's kind of a chopped up um, roof. There's no place to put solar there, but on the garage uh. With the south facing, there's the perfect amount of solar. Uh, according to our models, we should be able to uh, put that there. And then power the home for a hundred years with no net energy. We think that that. Um, climate goal is um, just really wonderful. We think that's kind of a model for. Um, no additional cost, um, amazing comfort for the occupant. No additional cost, amazing comfort for the occupants and zero climate impact. We think that's kind of a model for older retrofits on homes like this. So. That's the plan for the garage. The plan for the parking honestly is just three kids and trying to be. As comfortable as we can. Ryan will go through the different aspects here on the street. This is what it'll look like. But a couple of the neighbors already have double curb cuts. They have front yard parking. I'm not sure I understand the comment about. Only one home has front yard parking. Thirty-four Linden. Clearly has double curb cut front yard parking as does thirty-six Linden. And if you go down the street at five P M, functionally, most of these driveways going to the back. Are too narrow to be usable with today's vehicles. I'm not sure exactly what that means, but. What it means at five P M at night is that most cars look exactly like this page. They are. Pulled into the driveways and very clearly visible in front of the, in front of the homes.
Thanks, Tim. We'll take, we'll take the board through a kind of a neighborhood tour to see that. You know, but when we get there, so obviously this is, this is the, while not the subject, this is the revised home that's nearing completion. With the proposed landscaping upfront and the expanded existing driveway on the right side. I guess this is examples of the type of plant materials that you're, you're planning. And then here we've got the. Proposed site plan. So Tim, here on the back right is where the existing. Garage is that will be rebuilt at the same location. This is the thing we'll be talking about. This super narrow. Driveway of strips that we'll show in a minute is, is almost impassable or certainly not wide enough to park a car. And the kind of proposed expanded area and then the. Landscaped area and yard to the left. And here we get kind of to the meat of the proposal. So this, right, Tim, on the right here, this is existing driveway with a. Very small sedan parked there, but in a way that you wouldn't be able to open the doors or actually use or get out. Is that right?
Well, it's your car, so you can tell me how small it is, but. Every time we've tried to drive down here, we've scratched our car door on either the house or on the bushes. So that's, that's our primary issue.
And so the proposal is to essentially keep some portion of the existing driveway, replace it with. Pull out the center, replace it with grass and, and use the strips and get a car as back as you possibly could. While still being able to open the door. I think we've shown it here, almost entirely out, you know, behind the front yard. Setback line as far as one could get and still open a door where the kind of the notch of the porch is and possibly get out. And then the proposed enlarged area to the left so that you could get a second vehicle there. That's essentially the proposal.
From my perspective, it is, and you can also see the garage here that we're talking about. It's mostly obscured by the house, but that's also the garage we're talking about.
Now, next we'll kind of take them on a tour. This is, I guess to the left here, this is Nassau Street and these are the. The buildings, I'll say homes or buildings, but they're all kind of multifamily. To your left. And here we've kind of overlaid. Where one could put the kind of the driveway that HPC was suggesting to the left side. And I guess it would maybe fit in the neighborhood in that. Everything to the left here is just fully paved and turned into parking lots and. And that, that's ultimately what, what would become if we were to put a. A two car driveway that extended back beyond, behind the setbacks. To left side of the home. And there is a, as we'll show in a second, there's a lovely grouping of mature trees. The left side of the roots of which have been paved over by the neighbor. I guess we would be forced to do the same. On our side, if we were to put a parking area there. Also, Tim, I. We would. By expanding your driveway, likely not lose the street space, but we would be applying to the town for the new driveway and likely. At the net loss of a parking space on, on street for the neighborhood. Is that? Your expectation as well from your, you know, knowledge of the street?
That would be my understanding as well. I think. I mean, functionally, you create a parking lot from Nassau to twenty Linden. And. You know, that, yes, that's my understanding.
And the last, a loss of open space, unfortunately. So here, to the left. The diagram shows, you know, where, what, where we'd like to have landscaping and usable open space and yard. While it's not big, it could potentially fit the parking. We've shown on here the existing trees that we'd, we'd like to preserve. We would be paving underneath them. In order to, to fit parking here, which we would like to avoid. Our plan would be to, to kind of tuck the parking by a slightly expanded existing parking area. To the front right, rather than, than pave the kind of the one usable bit of open space in the neighborhood. Again, the type of landscaping that is proposed for the front to screen. But also to make this be a usable yard here and further protecting the canopy of the existing. Tree rather than paving underneath it. So, Tim, we, you and I kind of did a neighborhood stroll here virtually and kind of in person at times. But here, this is an example of a single width front yard parking that I think you were talking about before, right? This is where there are driveways, but they are not wide enough to get back behind the home, which means that someone's parking essentially. In front of the house, right?
In my opinion, that's the felt perspective. When you drive down this block of Linden at five P M. These driveways are there and folks are generally in the front of their, of their homes. They're just not usable towards the side or towards the back.
Then a few other examples. Then there's the front yard that's kind of double wide or something similar to what you're proposing, though minus the. Grass strip element. So here's twenty-eight Linden that shows a wider front parking area where two cars could fit. And that kind of narrow choke point where you can kind of get one car. The nose of a car back slightly behind the home. Again, here's thirty, thirty-four and thirty-six. With that same configuration as you go further down the street. And then, you know, we showed, you know, kind of. Who's got the front yard parking and who's got those wide openings and kind of marked them. Down the street, you know, who's got the, the double wide and who's got front yard parking. It's, we didn't have a different colored star for. Really just paving everything that's also quite prevalent in the neighborhood with multifamily, including right next door. So the, the amount of parking is. Readily observable and it's our goal to kind of minimize that by, by, you know, tucking it in and having it as minimal as possible, rather than devoting the entirety of the. The side yard to it. Going further down the street, similar treatments in Linden as well with the, the both front yard. And the double wide parking situation, again, quite, quite commonly done. Before we leave parking, again, Tim, just anything else you want to say before we move over to our architect to talk about the. The setbacks for the reconfigured garage, but ultimately, you know, with, with three. With, with young kids getting in and out of the home is, is a challenge. The, the. Street is a cut through street very close to Nassau. And even with an expanded driveway, there's really no. Option to have a turnaround. So the minimizing the amount of backing in and backing out that comes from stacked parking is, is. Very important and a safety concern. And keeping that on-street parking space by keeping the parking cut where it is, where it is now.
No, I think that adequately shares it. You know, we recently bought a minivan so that we'd have the doors that slide to try to be like more. Accommodating into just Princeton and we're city people. So like, we don't need a lot of space. We're. Just really trying to put a decent amount of parking here in a tucked away spot for our. Our three kids and. Keep our family safe with the cut through and. Yeah, I hope, I just hope that you guys can understand kind of the intention here. This isn't a. Developer developed lot for commercial resale or things like that. We're hoping to make this our home for a very long time and. I am exhausted with these little kids, but I hope they grow up to be really great citizens and I hope this is a wonderful place where they, where they grew up to do that.
Thank you, Tim. Well, he's not, well, the applicant's not going anywhere. Certainly available for questions. My, the next witness will be the architect to talk a little bit further about the. Some of the design elements, but Mr. Chair, if you, if you prefer to have Tim available with questions now or after our second win.
Board members, do you have any questions? The applicant? Right now, or should we, I think let's hear from the architect and then. Before we open it up to another part of the hearing. So let's, let's hear what the architect has to say.
Jeff, if you want to unmute yourself, and I know you've testified many, many, many times before this board, very briefly give your. Your credentials and connection to this, to the project.
I, I. Good evening. I have a bachelor's of architecture from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I'm currently licensed in New Jersey, Delaware and Pennsylvania. I've had my own practice in Flemington, New Jersey since nineteen ninety-seven.
Have you testified before this board before?
And I have testified.
I believe that at our most recent meeting as well. Actually, I think he was.
Okay, we'll, we'll accept you as an expert.
Thank you. So Jeff, a lot of the work you did in this project is not really the subject of, of. What we're talking about here, but maybe we could start with the, what we're calling, you know, the existing garage building behind. So these are photos of that. What's, what's there now and is proposed to be rebuilt? Is that right?
That's correct. Yes.
And then so here on the left, you've, or on the right, you've got what little bit of the existing building you can see. A photo of the. Existing garage and the proposed. Want to talk just a little bit about, you know, why, why it was designed this way and what constraints you, you had?
Yeah, I think as, as the owner. Testified to. The, the main intent for the roof line is to maximize the southern exposure of the roof for the solar panels. Which by the way, would not be facing the street. They'd be facing the backyard. And actually, I don't even know that you could see them because of the main house blocking view. The other reason to raise the roof a little bit was to provide some storage space. In the attic of the roof. Of the garage.
Our next slide shows the.
Right.
Elevations and.
Yeah, and like was testified, we'll be maintaining the existing footprint. Just rebuilding the garage in its proposed form.
And, and just I suppose for the, the record, the, the requirement here for these type of accessory structures, regardless of their use is now. Recently changed and modified and kind of to alleviate some of the problems that. The historic placement of these is, is caused throughout Princeton, but we still not quite get there. So the requirement is five for rear and five for the side. The existing, Tim, is point six, six feet to the rear. That will remain unchanged when it's rebuilt. And to the side yard is one point eight feet and that will remain unchanged. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
And the height remains below the, I think the requirement. For five feet would be fifteen feet in height, but we, we meet that requirement, but obviously don't meet the, the as of right five foot. Setbacks that were.
That's, that's correct. Just to mention, there's also a fence on. On the, the rear of the property and on that side, I believe.
Yeah, so there, it's, it is both screened a bit from the rear property and acts as its own screening essentially to help screen. The backyard from the adjacent. Residential property.
Yes.
So there's not much to say about the garage and.
I do have a question about the garage, while, while we're talking about it. What's it going to be used for?
I believe it's going to be used for storage.
It's not gonna, you won't get, you're not going to put a car in it, which you can do. I mean, obviously it's a garage. But it's, it's just going to be storage?
Yes.
The, the configuration, while there might have been this previous fantasy with smaller cars that you could actually get back there. It's not really, the driveway is too narrow and the amount of maneuvering to get over, even with that reduced setback to actually get in it is. I would say perhaps a fool's errand. So it's, it's, while I guess will be configured and usable for that. The reality is that no, you wouldn't be able to get a car back there and.
No problem. And the, and the point six feet. Which is mighty slim in the backyard is going to give you enough space to actually rebuild it?
I guess that, that'll be the issue for the contractor, but that's my understanding that, yes.
The world, the world's smallest contractor, probably. Okay, but that's, that's the end of there. So, so it is going to be on the original footprint. And it's going to be rebuilt and it's going to be used as storage.
Yes.
Okay, no problem.
There was, you know, one of the, one of the discussions with HPC was perhaps extending. You know, the roof or enlarging it so you know, you could create more of that exposure without the asymmetric roof, but my understanding is. We're, we're unfortunately constrained by, by the existing homes floor area and that even. Even if we're just like an open covered roof and not part of the building that would count as floor area as well. Is that correct?
That's right. We are, we are maxed out on the floor area ratio.
Okay. Thank you.
So. Share and members, that's our, our primary testimony. Happy to. Answer any other questions as, as you heard from HPC's recommendations. You know, we did explore whether something could go to the left and the short answer is technically something could. It would likely come at the expense of the. Let me just go back a few slides here. The mature trees, which we would be parking under and essentially paving over and utilizing. The only green space in the neighborhood, we feel unnecessarily. And while I think we asked initially as consideration under C one or C two, the reality of this application is that. From a planning perspective, we think that. Minimizing the visual impact of a big driveway that is very visible. By tucking it in the corner and utilizing the existing driveway, but expanding it. Meets the modern, the needs of a, a, a family. It matches the pattern of development in the neighborhood where this is quite common. And, and without essentially imposing some type of open space pavement tax where. The one usable place, if you see in this street pattern, why they chose this home. Would be largely paved and, and lost and we feel unnecessarily and that would. In one way, match the street pattern of the development to the left. In that there are a series of buildings with large parking lots and we, the applicant is, is looking to avoid that. We want to get a car on there, but without. Having the appearance. And devoting so much space that could be used for other purposes in a much better way. By, by paving it. Fully. So with that, we're happy to answer any, any questions you have. But thank you for your consideration here tonight.
Okay, I do have a question. Can you go back to the site plan that you had before you went to this photo?
Here's. I head up, but this, this.
No, keep, keep going, keep going. I think. Yeah, that's it. Okay, so the front yard setback, I believe, is. Right where you point to it.
Yes.
So that's your, that's your. That's your line of parking in a sense. So you have to be behind that.
That is correct.
So if you were to, as Mr. Bridger mentioned in his memo, if you were to. Push this to the other side, to this side.
Yes.
You're basically holding that, if you held that. Front to that setback line, you're only going back. Alongside the house, less than half the depth of the house and you have the entire backyard. You're, you're, right now, what you're doing is the other, the other photos you identified. Are, and I know I've driven up that block probably every day for the last. Quite a few years. And, and it's not unique. The parking in the front yard in a sense is not unique to Linden Lane. But if you notice, in most of the cases, people are. But if you notice, in most of the cases, people are parking in their existing driveways. Which are not directly in front of the house. There are cases where the parking is in front of the house, but these are spaces that are. By and large alongside the house, and as you noticed in your property, they're too narrow to get to the backyard. And so they're parking alongside in an existing driveway. Basically, you're just parking in the front yard. I mean, and when you do, quite frankly, have an alternative. You'll recapture the area on the right. As green area and you'll take a small portion, quite frankly, of your usable side yard. And create a a parking area there which is compliant.
Well, no argument that a compliant parking area could be done here. Our 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 argument, though, that is it is. It creates an unusable tiny. Green area in the front right. That would recapture a space that is almost too narrowed for a driveway, would be unusable for really any other purpose. And replaces it by paving this large area to the left. You're you're correct.
You're what you're showing in this all pavement is not what you're going to have. You're gonna you're gonna pave a space for two cars. Or one car. I mean, you know, you're not going to have that 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 lot you show has a number of cars in it. You're going to take an area that's twenty by twenty.
This is this, this is that area. This is a two parking stalls behind. The setback line and and a normal driveway to get to them. That is what that is what a compliant.
I was looking at the site plan and when you look at the site plan and look at that. Maybe I'm wrong. Okay.
We would to to put. So twenty, I think we have a, Jeff, I don't know if you have that other diagram that 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 shows that with the setbacks, but. Essentially, you would be a driveway, a a single width and a flare driver that goes to the setback line. And then behind that. Two oops, two compliant parking stalls, so that basically this. This whole area, which would otherwise be green space and usable, would need to be devoted to parking. So you're you're correct with that, but that that is the the trade off that we're asking to to be considered.
Yeah, but again, it's 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 creating parking in the front yard, which is. Not allowed. I mean, yeah, look, I I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying from a practical standpoint, you do have an alternative.
You're you're correct.
Providing a spot directly in front of the house.
You are correct and and we're we're we we don't think it should be considered under a C one hardship, but rather as a C two. Because this is a better use of this one. If you look up and down the street, there's not a lot of green space and while everyone else with perhaps narrower lots has the configuration we're proposing. In in those cases, it's not at the expense of of usable open space and we're we're just essentially asking to consider. While yes, there is a compliant alternative, it comes at the expense of a street parking space. And it comes at the expense of the, we think the appropriate development pattern and and. Open space, air and light for the neighborhood and while.
Okay, look, I I I'd like to hear from the other board members. Let's continue with the hearing and we will get to that. Unless, board members, do you have any comments right now or do you want to? Wait till we get further along.
I agree that there's a reasonable alternative to the request.
Anyone else want to say anything at this point?
I I have a question. I'll start there. Losing a parking spot, wouldn't there be a gain where the existing driveway is now?
Well, because the existing driveway is kind of ganged with the one next door. They're moving it to this side would would likely result in. In the lost spot by expanding the existing driveway slightly. We wouldn't lose the spot, but why is spacing a driveway on the left side a new one likely would? So it it has to, it, I mean, if I put the the.
Well, if. I guess I may have trouble understanding. If you did what you're proposing. Your preference with the expanded curb cut. And. You would. You know, if you don't do that, couldn't there be a parking spot there?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it would be, it'd be in a zero sum.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I would just say again, there there's a current driveway here, which would be expanded slightly, which we do not believe at the expense of a street space.
Okay. And if you could go to your. Your your listing of properties, your grids on on parking.
Yes.
You know, I I if I'm, most of the check marks. In the single, the first column. What is that? Single front yard? I think that's where Steve started that. Most of those are people that are just opting to park in their driveway, in the front yard setback. Probably like at least six of us on this call are parked right now. And people do, people do that all over town. And I hope I hope you agree, but maybe you don't.
No, I I it's it's a fair point, but I'll say that the ones that we have marked, it's not that people have an option and choose to. It's because they're like ours driveway. It is actually too narrow. While there may be a driveway there. On paper or by design, you actually couldn't get the car back there. So the ones that we've shown. Are more like this situation where you basically could not.
Okay.
Pull back.
I guess, I guess we'll just disagree on that because. I think many of those, they can get their car back. Yours is is narrow. I'm and now we're theirs. I think they just opt to do it. And as as so that's that's my belief. And I I walked the neighborhood. I was also on the parking task force. So I know about long driveways, whether it's in the tree streets or. Half the properties in. Princeton have just long driveways. It may go to the back. So, and I can understand wanting to avoid stack parking, which, yeah. But that that comes with the house. You know, I think the only, there are, as as you mentioned, thirty four and thirty six and my. Take on that thirty six Linden. Actually, the house has a two car garage. So they can pull their cars in. They may never pull it in. I don't know. But that's not not the same as always having to park in front of the house. Now, the other house thirty four. Yeah, they they built an addition onto the front of the house many, many, many years ago. And yes, they do park and it's a legal spot that they got a variance. I voted against it, but. They created their own situation. So I I I know those. Yeah, everybody has a single driveway and I imagine a lot of. I don't know. I didn't research it. Some of the expanded curb cuts, even like across the street. On those older Victorians or whatever. I would guess they're not all legal.
My, I took out my tape measure just to be sure and they are far larger than the. Current zoning would would allow.
What I'm saying, what I meaning is by legal, they never got a variance for.
You know, they're there, right? And that the street was recently repaved and. Look, I I I agree with so much of what you said and and just as like fellow citizens and I'm here too and I hope to be. I'm here for a very long time with our family. We're we're just trying to make our family really comfortable. Our kids are at, you know, we're going to go to community park for school like. This is, we're just really trying to like snuggle in. And all of these homes here have this the single width lots. We. Specifically rented, we we moved here and we rented and we looked and looked and I, we've been on nine different homes. And the reason why we like got conviction on this one and like really went in is because it does have that kind of special. Extra side lot and we wanted that for the green space. We wanted that for the kids to play. Soccer and to put a playground up in the backyard or, you know, a little fort or whatever. And it's it's just nice. I I think if we were thirty four Linden or thirty six Linden, like there's no. We wouldn't have this discussion. There's no other place to put this. Like it would just be, can you do it or can you not? And like. You can't, but they, you know, they did it and they have it and like it fits with the neighborhood and. I guess we're we are just trying to snuggle in in like the least car centric place possible with the most amount of space for the kids to. Fit in. I think if you. If you put the driveway on the left, like no other house on this entire block has a driveway on the left. Everyone has it on the right. This block was recently repaved a couple of years ago. You guys know that. They did the driveways and the. Sidewalks and all of that, and there are a lot of very large curb cuts. I have no idea how they got here. I got out of tape measure one night. Ryan and and Jeff said, you're gonna you're gonna get the police called on you measuring everyone's lot with a, you know. But I got it out and like, it is far larger than whatever the current zoning size and that's fine. I I get how this happens. Things just grow, but like. So we're we're just trying to fit in, I think, on the right side. I think minimizing the driveway total of space and. Very comfortable for a minivan. Maximum green space for the kids. Like, that's what we're trying to do here, so. I don't know. I look, I I get that it's not compliant and I get that there could be a compliant option on the left. I don't like actually understand what you would achieve. Just kind of talking to the board here. You could put a compliant option on the left. You can. Clearly see the cars, the difference between like a couple of feet back and a couple of feet forward. Like, I don't know what we're talking about. Everyone parks their cars in their front yard. Variants are not driveway or not, like the cars are in the front yard. And if you put it on the side, you're gonna super clearly see that. You're not like hiding anything. It's not like. Visibly improving the streetscape or the livability or the, I actually think it makes it worse because you got like parking lot, parking lot, parking lot coming off of Nassau Street, but. You guys can decide. So, you know, we're trying to snuggle in and we're trying to like. Make this fit in with the neighborhood and really just be a great place for the for the family, for the minivan, for the kids like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I I appreciate what you guys are doing. I totally understand it and. Thank you for your consideration.
Board members, any other comments, questions? Okay, Mr. Kennedy, please continue.
All right, thank you. Just again, in in summary, much, much appreciated. I know this is. Challenging. There's perhaps one bucket of things that may be easy rebuilding the garage, you know, on on a location where where it already is. At least I hope so. And then a part that may be a bit more. More challenging again. If you look at the pattern of this street and I do agree with Mr. Mr. Floyd. In in his analysis of what is there and and to the extent we're showing something, you know, and that the color coding was meant to show which show. Wider driveways, because there's two components here. It's like, can you park in the front or can your driveway be wider? We're asking for both here and we, you know, found examples of both, not all of them unless they had both colored. Stars were meant to show front yard parking and with. But this is the pattern and and we want it, if you look at the 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 goals of the master plan that you that you might advance. With the C two, you know, the the appropriate, you know, A, the appropriate use of lands and manner that will promote the health. Safety morals, general welfare, C, adequate light air and open space. Appropriate densities for neighborhoods, sufficient space, which is G, locations for open space and uses. H, location, design and transportation. We I I hope in may not agree, but our 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 goal here was at least to get out there. That. What we're proposing, considering the neighborhood and considering the strengths, is a better alternative. Than paving and and having a large compliant. Parking area to the left and to the extent it, what's interesting here, unfortunately, is that the tucked in expanded. Front yard area on the right matches and and unfortunately, the the big pavement area matches too. You know, if you look on both sides of the street, particularly as you approach Nassau, the there's way too much. From the applicant's opinion of 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 space devoted to parking. It's not that you could see it. It's the amount of space and the amount of. Pavement compared to usable open space that that people can use and enjoy or that can even be be seen. By the neighborhood and we're just trying to avoid that. Could we have a compliant space? Yes. Would that mean paving under the drip line of a of a tree and doing some things that we're we're not excited about? Also, yes, but we we're hoping to to at least get out there and convince you that there there there's an alternative that fits the neighborhood. Meets the goals of a growing family and and frankly, from a planning perspective. Maybe you can agree with us that on as a C two is is better planning. So, thank you.
You're welcome. You could use, by the way, you could use that same logic. Throughout all the tree streets. Rather than putting parking in the side, on the side, you could park in the front yards and create more open space. So. I I understand what you're saying, but it it changes the 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 character of the neighborhood with parking in the front yards. So. All right. So anything else before we go into any board members, any other questions? Mr. Kennedy will go into exec to open this up to the public right now. Okay. Claudia, has anyone indicated they'd like to speak on behalf of this application?
There are no hands.
Okay. All right, we'll give it a minute. We're opening this up to the public. If anyone's out there who would like to speak, just indicate that by at the bottom of your screen, raising your hand. And we'll recognize you. Okay, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Once again, Mr. Kennedy, before we go into executive session, would you like to sum up?
Again, thank you all. I I again, I I I hope that the the garage is is not as challenging as 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 the parking. For you guys to consider and and to the extent you're inclined to do something that that's. Simple and and perhaps not consider something that's more challenging, that is not be an all or nothing effort this evening. We feel that there there's not a substantial detriment to the public good by doing this. It fits the neighborhood. Pattern and and has the benefits of one of the few, what what one of the things that actually is interesting, if you look up down the tree streets. This is one of the few lots that has undeveloped space in it and that is unique to this lot. Potentially. So this is not, you know, the the classic C one situation where someone has no other option to park. May exist in the neighborhood and fit the pattern. This may be the one unique spot to to avoid. Developing a a space that might otherwise be be left open. But beyond that, I I think you're. This board is. Frankly, just from your your questions, I I I understand and we see that you understand the the challenge here. And very much appreciate your consideration here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board members. Let's discuss this. Comments, questions?
Steve, can we? Allow the garage, the changes that are proposed to the garage, but not the driveway changes?
Well, technically, the driveway is existing. And I don't believe Derek, is a driveway required to be paved?
It's required to be gravelled or surfaced.
Okay, so so.
It could be pavers or but can't be dirt.
So technically, if if the driveway, if that's going to be a garage. Then then there has to be gravel or paving in there. Now, whether you can get a car down that is a whole other issue. It exists now. And it could remain. I believe we're allowed, they're allowed to rebuild it on the same footprint. Is that correct?
The driveway or I mean, the the garage?
The garage.
No, it's. You can repair it, but once you tear it down, it should go to a conforming situation, so.
So if we if we're taking this, if we're taking this thing down and rebuilding it, it needs to conform.
Right, or, you know, grant the variance. Or grant the variance.
Well, grant the variance. Okay. All right.
The garage and a shed. I mean, it's really not gonna be a garage anymore. It's gonna be a shed, right? It's not gonna have cars in it.
That's what they're they're setting it up as a garage, but saying they're not gonna put a car in.
We just said from a setback perspective, that it it's an accessory structure and I don't know if it matters what 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 the use of it is.
Well, but if it's if it's a shed, not a garage, then if it's a garage, it technically needs to have a driveway to it. If it's a shed, then it doesn't need to have a driveway to it. Correct? So you could drive, it could go out, those strips could go out altogether. Potentially. Right?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, it also seems to me that, you know, with landscaping, you could easily do that new curb cut and you could. Hide the driveway a little bit and still have your parking on that left side and you could landscape around it quite nicely. Um, and yeah, you'd lose, maybe you'll lose a little bit of space, but. You know, I think it could be accommodated quite nicely with a with a narrow driveway and bumping out to a. Uh, a conforming parking on the left, I think could work quite easily. And I think could be made to look quite nice as well. For what it's worth.
If we, if we. Let's say for argument's sake, we approve the garage. But not the additional space in the front yard. What would you do?
So the the a compliant driveway on the left, understanding is is kind of as of right, it would be. A um, street opening permit um, with the city and and would also require us to close the other driveway. Um, at the same time, because we would need a variance to have two curb cuts. So, um. My, I I believe what would initially happen is nothing. The garage would be rebuilt. The the driveway would stay as is, and then at some future point, the applicant may decide. To build a different compliant driveway on the other side, but they would necessitate. Applying for the street opening permit on the left and part of that, unless we came back for a variance for. Two driveways, which I know will not be granted, um, uh, would need a variance to keep both. So it would, that would be. You'd have to have pick one or the other at that point, and that would be essentially as of right.
Yeah. All right, no, I know that that part of Linden Lane. Is every day has cars parked from the street from Nassau Street as far down as, you know, pretty far down. Um, okay, board members, any questions, any discussion of this?
Are we in executive session? We are.
Yes, we are.
I'm compelled to agree with the applicant on this only because of all the other on-street park or front yard parking that's going on. I know. And I know that any cases they could, they might not park it, that they don't have to park in the front yard, but they do. And I think, uh. You know, if they're gonna have a garage and they're gonna have a driveway going to it and adding a half, another half spaces or another space. Is, you know, why not leave a little green space? Why, why? Why pave over a perfectly nice lawn? So anyhow, I, like I said, I I'm compelled to to go along with the.
You're in you're in favor of the garage variance as well as the additional spot in the front yard?
Yes.
And obviously, if they do that, they have to go back to the municipality to get the curb cut expanded.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I actually, I, well, I was gonna say this could make me less popular with. Um, but I I do, I. I'm one, I I I agree with Mr. Schreiber. I I don't exactly see. Uh, it's not as though if they park on the left-hand side, we're not gonna see the car. Or the cars. Uh, I mean, they'd be farther back. But I I kind of agree. It seems like it's it's less disruptive and more more preserving of. Green space. I know that we worry about precedence. But I I feel like it might be, uh, not the worst thing to allow in this case to have us. A second, you know, space for a second car tucked in, as they say, on the right-hand side.
Not tucked in, it's right in front.
Well. None of the other. Okay.
No, no, look, I understand what you're saying. I'm just trying to respond to the ordinance requirement. Of not parking in the front yard and and a practical alternative. I don't like the idea of putting in more paving either.
And the tree.
And the tree. I think the tree can survive. All right, no, I understand where you're coming from, please.
I also agree with Jim. I think it, you know, it probably could be landscaped, but, you know, it's still paving over. Perfectly good. Lawn to me.
It's, I I understand. I agree both. I agree with both sides of it. It's it's challenging, but this is a nice big lot and to then just. Stack up two cars right there, right on the street when you don't really need to, and when it's against the 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 code is. Is a bit of a challenge. I I see it from a, you know, if if it was my house, I'd be asking for the same thing probably, but. Um, I also do think there is room over there on the left side, and especially when you look at it in a plan view. You can see how you could you could landscape. I don't like the idea of throwing down new concrete either, but um. Just depends on how you how we how we should look at it from. From our zone plan, um. I don't know. It just, it's a nice lot to have another car stuck right in front there.
It's it's a nice, it's a very nice lot. I mean, probably one of the nicer lots on the block.
Yep.
But again, that that's the trade-off.
Yeah, I mean, the other side of it, you know, it'd be nice, it's gonna be a shed or a garage to park your bikes in. Be nice to go up that existing driveway to get back there. So I totally see the the practicality of it. I'm just grappling with the the fact that it could be made, it could be made to conform quite easily.
Yes. Are there any other comments? Well.
No, I agree that it it's not, um, it it's it's not an enormous gain to to move it over to the left. Um, in in terms of the 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 trade-offs in the end, I I understand that it is more compliant. Um, if anything could be done to skinny down the throat of the the apron. Um, so, uh. You know, the 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 cars could come in and then uh, kind of angle. Off a bit, that would help. I I don't love the idea of, um, the width of the curb cut. As as proposed. And, uh, I'm okay with the the garage changes.
Yeah. Yeah, well, you're gonna have, once you expand the curb, if you expand the curb cut on the right, you're going to have a, that that. From a standpoint of widening it, you you can't, there's no room to put a single curb cut in and angle off into the front. Whereas on the left side, you could put a single curb cut in. In the center of two spots and then move slightly to the right or left, because you've got to get back beyond the setback.
Yeah, I I understand. There's not a lot of room when it's on the right. I I'm just suggesting that it really be kept to the. The the very minimal, you know, I I don't see a dimension on uh, the the plan right now, but.
Yeah.
Just to minimize it.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Well, all right, um. So we've we've discussed it. We're trying to come to a conclusion with someone like to make a motion.
I move we approve the. Proposal. Is it a C two? I believe it is.
Yes, that's what the applicant is suggesting, yeah.
It's a C two.
I'll second that.
Now, that's for both the garage and the and the parking.
Right.
Okay. And we have a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Okay. Ask it, maybe you could be a good neighbor and ask the people next to you on the right if you could plant. A nice overhanging tree there to maybe do a little relief, kind of hanging over the driveway there to kind of. Like you said, cozied in a little bit, because it's gonna be, um, you know, it's right up against that that property line. Maybe it might make a little bit of relief there.
Okay, um, any other comments? Claudia, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Chen? Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
No.
Mr. Floyd?
No.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
No.
Chairman Cohen?
No.
Thank you. Sorry, um.
Understood. May may I, uh, just. Is it possible to to uh, request a a a vote on on just the rear variant?
Uh, yeah, I guess we could.
Oh, wait a minute. Oh, no, no, well, wait a minute. Okay, so the board just voted. To deny.
We took the two variances as one motion. So technically, we denied both.
Correct.
Can we take, can we at this point take, make a, Mr. Kennedy, you want us to vote separately on the garage?
I would, I I would interpret the what just happened as a lack of approval of both. Uh, and and perhaps uh, someone would entertain a motion to.
Very, very nicely worded, um. Okay, so if, um, Karen, is that acceptable? Can we do that?
And what is this then? This is gonna be a motion to what?
Allow the allow the garage reconstruction.
And deny the remainder.
And and deny the parking. But we we voted the two together. And, um, I think, I don't know if that was all of our intention, but is it something we could do?
Okay, sure.
Chairman Cohen? With the solar panels included.
The solar panels.
Yeah.
The solar panels are excluded, um, I guess.
Well, now, 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 well, well, wait a minute.
Wait, 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 hold on. The solar panels are not allowed. We could, we could grant the variance. To allow the reconstruction of the garage with the potential for solar panels.
Okay, so now, this motion. Is supposed to address. Uh, whether the garage should be allowed, and then how do you want to handle the solar panels? With solar panels, because a variance is needed for that.
Yes, well, I guess would someone like to make a motion? Addressing the garage issue and solar panels? Or just the garage issue?
Yeah, I think the, I'll, I I'd be okay with the garage. Okay, passing the garage and the solar and the appropriate solar panels if they're allowed.
Yeah, I I think.
What what? No, they're they're not allowed, Jim. So if you want to give a variance, you can't.
Yeah, yeah, I'd give a variance for the solar panels to be allowed. They're not gonna be visible anyway.
Yeah, I think the solar panels are, as they said, not visible from the street. I think it'd be advantageous. I think it'd be good, but. Again, so would you like your, how would you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, yeah, to approve the garage as it's proposed and the solar panels.
Okay. Do we have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll, please? Claudia?
Bernice?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right, um. We have. Well, first of all, does does somebody want, anybody want a a little bit of a break here? We have one more, one more case to hear this evening. Yes, you would like a break? Okay, we, it is. It is ten sixteen. Uh, ten twenty-one, we'll, uh. Take up the next application, five minutes.
Thank, thank you all. Hey, it sounds like a lot of people walk by my house every day. Please, um. Stop by and say hi. I'd love to shake your hands.
I I talked to your contractors today. They're very nice and the house is beautiful.
House is beautiful. Please, please do, um, come by, say hi. I'd love to, love to say hi, shake your hands. Just good to know you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, ten twenty-one. Thank you. Okay, um, ten twenty-one. Oh, you're all back. All right. Claudia, are you ready to resume?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our fourth and final hearing is, uh, case. What is case number? I don't see a case number here. Uh, two forty-six Valley Road, block seventy-three, seventy-two oh three lot eight in the R six zone. Okay, Derek, can you give us the benefit of your memo?
Yes, sir, thank you. Thing Kali, sorry about mispronouncing your name, um.
It's right. Yeah.
Thank you, seeking a C one and C two variance to permit the expansion of existing driveway in exception to the required parking setbacks. Properties located in the R six zone in the former Princeton Township, the existing single-family use is permitted as of right. The, uh, subject lot is not complying with respect to the ten thousand eight hundred and ninety-one square foot lot requirement, the existing lots ten thousand three hundred and ninety-one square feet. It's also not complying with regard to the eighty-five foot lot depth or existing sixty-nine point two eight feet, and the, uh, subject house itself is not compliant with the, uh, side yard setback, uh, requires fifteen, existing is nine point five one. Um, corner lots have two side yards, they don't have a rear yard, so that would be the, the back setback. Um, zoning history applicant was granted a variance in nineteen seventy-one to construct a nine foot nine by thirty-three point six addition to the rear of the existing house, um, and in two thousand eighteen, um, she applied for a, uh, construction permit, um, to construct in a variance to construct the, uh, the two-story addition that's currently on the house in the rear, this board approved that variance in exception to the rear, the side yard setback. And, uh, there was a notice of violation issued in November two thousand twenty-one for, um, expanding the existing driveway without zoning approval, um, this variant seeks to relieve to, uh, expand the driveway, and then there was a court action, uh, in February two thousand twenty-three for renting rooms without zoning approval, the applicant, um, pleaded guilty and has corrected all the violations and the property is complying now, um. The following variances are required to expand the existing driveway. Required side yard setback is five feet and the proposed is two feet. The, uh, required driveway width at the property line is ten feet, the proposed is twenty-five feet. The max driveway width for the first seventy-five feet is twenty-two feet and the proposed is twenty-five feet, um. She's considered, uh, asked for consideration under the C one criteria, criteria, excuse me, and the project does create more than four hundred square feet of net new impervious coverage and a stormwater management plan will be required if the application is acted on favorably, um. And if she gets approved, she'll get it, she'll need to apply to council for a curb cut, um, on Valley Road. That's my memo, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to address them.
Board members, any questions of Mr. Berger? Yes, Michael.
Um, on, on the history, number four, summons was issued for renting rooms without a zoning approval. Um, and you say at the end, she corrected the violation, what was corrected and?
Okay, she, um, has made it the house one unit for rental, and the rear unit is an ADU, so, uh, they're two, they're now, and they are legally, um, registered with the rental housing board, and, uh, it's complying at this point.
Okay, yeah, that was gonna be my next question, so it is legally an ADU now?
Yes, sir.
That's the back, okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of Mr. Berger? Okay, um, I guess we'll hear from the applicant at this point if you'd like to explain what you're doing and why you're doing.
Ma'am, before you start testifying, we're just gonna swear you in, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful? Yes, I swear be truth, yes. Thank you. Okay, my name is Fong Lu, I bought this property back two thousand four. It's a single driveway, very old house, so though, because before the rental property from a pre-owner, we bought the house as, treat as a rental property, put the gravel. Uh, before money rule have ruled innovation, the old curb very low. A tenant driving, uh, from driveway from straight to my driveway, the, it's been a driveway, gravel there, no problem. Then the driveway put a new curb very high and new car can go through because I have the rental property for more than four rooms, more than four rooms. And the tenant, one car driveway cannot through. Actually have the sixth room and the two rental property, you know, two unit. So they through the curb, the damage occur, you know, damage the car, curb very high. So I just to make a, cut the curb, so township gave the, the, like, the ticket, so that's we brought here. As for zoning variance, give me the two car parking. One car parking definitely cannot satisfy for my property for the two unit. So from another reason, we cannot parking the car on the street because my property round the corner from the, from the Harden Street, and it's, that's why is the old yellow one because not allowing me to park in the car. From another side intersection for the Uring Street, I have the block two, it's no more can park in the car on the corner too, so it's no way I can park in the car on the streets, so I have to park in my own yard. Without the permits, my tenant have to park in the car on the dirt, and the damage definitely is water mess every month. So I'm asked for the extension for my driveway, get your permit. And also, if I put the driveway and the curb looks nice, the feelings for the, on the street, look at my, all my, the street neighbors, they have a two-car garage, very nice. So also I put the driveway, two car driveway, make the safe for people, my tenant in and out. As a new, uh, introduce any traffickers for the street. Also includes the health value for my house too. And the new drawback for anything for make extra parking driveway to do anything on the property trans, transport, perfect.
Okay, is that, I, I, I'm sorry, but I didn't quite understand everything you said, but you have two units now?
Yes.
And, and obviously a single driveway is not sufficient.
Yes.
And so you want to expand the driveway to accommodate how many cars?
Uh, I think it's four cars.
Four cars, two behind two.
Yeah, because have the long driveway can.
Yes. Okay, um. Okay. Is there, and this is again just a question, you're asking for a variance from the side yard. And I was just about to look at this on Google Earth, is there a way for you to comply with the required five-foot setback from the side property line and still get the amount of paving you need?
Hmm, hmm, not enough, and the, the front is okay on the back because my driveway like the ladder shape and it's not straight. The five foot, uh, is not enough for the car, it just won't put it in, cannot deeper.
Okay, I'm looking, I'm looking at the driveway now, and it appears that you have a, a row of low hedges. Is that right on the property line?
Uh, so let me share my, uh, share my, uh, name. Okay, and, uh, okay, just, okay, share my plane, hold on, share my screen. Not to share my screen, uh, here. Can you see my screen?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, so, um, how can I move the screen? Okay, so.
Yeah, that, there you go.
So I'm here, so, uh, you, you see the screen, this is shaped like this one. If the five foot and in the ends and they very narrow. So, uh, so that's why I make a straight two foot setback. And then that's why I can, at least I can some area can put a two car in the end, and so that's the, that's the reason.
Okay, so the two-point, what did you say, two point seven five? Or two foot?
A two-foot setback from neighbor property.
Two-foot setback along the side yard property line?
Yes.
And then what's the width of the paving altogether?
Uh, paving the size, I have a two section, area six and area seven.
Yeah, but what is the overall width? How wide is that, the two of those together?
Together. Around the like, the, a, the narrow one, the bottom one is like a, uh, eighteen, uh, together. On the, the narrow one and the common street is, um, eighteen, uh, twenty-four eighty-eight together.
So together, the two of them are twenty-four feet wide?
Uh, the, on the, the street here, around the street here, but the.
Along the street it's twenty-four, and then as you.
Twenty-four eighty-eight together, two driveway together.
Two, two driveways together, twenty-four feet wide.
Uh, twenty-four, yeah, wide.
Okay, and you've got between, it looks like on this drawing, you have what in the back, thirty-two feet to the house?
Uh, that's to the house, include the, uh, the plate for, this is not the parking.
Yeah, no, I understand, that's the patio and the steps are in that and everything else.
Mm-hmm.
So, so then you have, so. All right, that, that, that answers my question, I mean, you could have a little more setback in there, but two feet, two foot will give you at least some room for planting. Okay, all right, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions?
Yeah.
Oh, you want to say something else, please?
No, do you want me to change this, anyone look at the, this is screen, so we could go back, that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
How many people currently live in the dwelling?
Sorry?
How many people currently live in the dwelling?
Uh, two unit, six people.
And, but you're only asking for a total of four spaces?
Uh, people, some students, they don't have the car. So for example, now I have the six tenants and the two student, they had drive the bike. That's why, you know, for student normally they don't ever have the car. That's why I asked for the, at least I can two par, the four cars. So that's the, at least I can, um, offer that there's a two-part, two-car parking, not a one-car parking.
And do you live in the unit? Do you live in one of the units?
No, I'm not allowed to live there, that's why I have the, uh, I move out. Before I planned to leave there upstairs, rented, uh, rented basement two unit, and then the, Mr. Derek said not allow me, so either I rent, I share the kitchen with them, I don't want to share my kitchen. So I moved to West Windsor, I rented two unit fully.
A, a question for Derek, I, I vaguely remember us proving this a couple of years ago. And it seemed to me, or one, a question to you is, at the time we approved it, was the was it allowed to be a, a two-unit property?
Uh, there was a flat ordinance at the time, but it's been greatly relaxed, so at the time we approved it, it was presented as a, as a single-family house, had one kitchen, and, uh, that's how it was set up.
That's the way I remember, and so you know, we were told that it was gonna be a one-family unit, and then very shortly after that, it became a two-family or multiple housing.
Well.
Right?
I mean, there was room, I, I think there was confusion about the requirements for rentals, if each rentals ha- has a parking space, it's gotta be registered and, you know.
Right, but we asked the question of whether it was gonna be rental space, and we were assured that it was gonna be a family space, I think.
I think you're right, Stephen, yeah.
I think your recollection is right because some people questioned the actual flow design, if it was gonna be a one-family. And we were assured it's gonna be a one-family, it wasn't gonna be a rental. But that's the past, um, but you're, you're right.
I was just trying to check my memory on that.
Quick question, Derek. Um, with the approved setup now, what is the minimum number of parking spaces required?
Uh, just two, the ADU only has two habitable rooms, so it doesn't trigger a parking space, but.
Right.
That doesn't necessarily equate with reality.
Yeah. You know, I my thought was she's building for more cars than we require, and there's no, no, no restriction against providing more. One would hope you could do it within the zoning code. Especially when you have all that land on the other side of the house. That, but that's, that's a statement, not a question.
Yeah, no, that's, Michael, you're right, that was my question when I asked about the side yard setback.
Yeah.
On that hedge line, because it could be five feet, and then it would move closer to the side steps and the patio area, but you've got that whole area on the other side.
So, I will ask the applicant a question, have you considered putting parking on the other side of the house instead of having it where it is and needing a variance?
Uh, another side, still have to ask for permission, the zoning variance, I, um, this is one car driving here already. One drunk car ready driveway. Another side of the, Mr. Derek, it's the same thing, I have to cutting the curb on the side, put another driveway, it's the same way. So, uh, so it's the same thing, need the zoning variance approved. But that's really, it's, put more much the burden for me, because I have existing driveway just close by already, if you put another one, it's a two, totally have to redesign the all-new driveway to run to the another side and the parking.
It would seem to me that if the, at the narrow back portion, it's thirty-two feet to the property line, you could have a five-foot setback at that side, which is getting wider as you get to the street. And then you could have a twenty-foot driveway. Or for two cars, even an eighteen-foot driveway. And make it work with the existing steps that are there. But.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, it seems like it's an awfully wide driveway. You, you can fit two cars side by side in a, in a narrower driveway.
In a narrow portion.
And, and you could be compliant, you, you, you just need, you're looking for another three feet or so, and if it's a, a twenty-four, twenty-five foot wide driveway, you can shave feet off of that and put it towards a setback.
So you wanted to move my curb, cut the curb there, so just, uh, now come, if you see the landscape and then move the wider there, and so, you want me to say the spring, what do you want, let me see. Share my screen, um.
Excuse me, Derek, what's the front yard setback on Valley Road there?
So you want me to cut, make the move this way to the length here, more move to my, the take a five foot back, cut the moving deeper here, correct?
Uh, you're trying to increase the setback, um, on on the property line.
I'm sorry, Steve, the setback is twenty-five feet for a parking space and a, and the house.
For the. And the house, so. What I, what I, excuse me, Bernice, what I was getting to is, so if we take the twenty-five feet, it's twenty-eight feet to the house, so we have three feet in front of the house, and then gosh, what's that, eighty-eight? Gosh, what's that eighty eight? What's the depth of the lot? Eighty eighty eight feet? I can't read the survey.
It's.
Sixty nine?
Sixty nine point two eight.
That leaves. Twenty, that leaves forty five feet. Beyond the setback, so you could put two two cars in there. So you could put two cars. One behind the other. And an eighteen foot theoretically, and an eighteen foot drive at the narrow end. Um and get the required setback in there. I think I just don't know what the dimension of the steps that come off of the house are. But.
Hold on. From the property line to the steps, it's about twenty six feet.
Oh, so you could do that. So you could easily have a five foot. A five foot paved area. And an eighteen foot. A five foot setback and eighteen foot drive is twenty three and still have three feet to the steps. So you could you could. Make it compliant and get the required setback. And still put everything on that side and not park in the front yard.
Um, okay, so that's moved around the neighbor sides, five foot setback. That's move my property uh move the driveway from toward my it's um. The the this side I have the real work um. Other set. If I have the the landscaping areas like the the bring the thing long area. Other white made it a setback. Thirty five, five foot?
Five foot is the requirement, yes.
Okay. And move around the front wide. Okay, I can do that.
Right, so you don't need a variance then.
Uh do I need the virus? So this.
No, what Karen, would we need any variances here?
The driveway width can't exceed twenty two feet.
Say it again, please, Derek.
I'm sorry, the driveway width cannot exceed twenty two feet, so.
Okay, so we're we're. So there's a lot of paving in there now. I mean, there's. There there's gravel between the edge of the paved area and the side yard.
Right.
But the paved area. The paved area. Actually, it doesn't look like it doesn't look like. What, excuse me, uh the the width, the width of the black that paved area now is how wide?
Uh current also eleven uh eleven point twenty five with on the on the Valley Road.
Eleven, you said?
Eleven point twenty five, yes.
Eleven point twenty five, so. To go to eighteen, we'd be adding a little less than eight feet. And that so. We would, Derek, that we should be okay then, right?
Well, the curb cut at the property line, the max it can be is ten. So that's one issue. It's she might need a variance for that, but. You know, if you gave him the. Stepped it back five feet so you could have a vegetative barrier on the planting strip on the side of the sidewalk and. Would reduce impervious and.
So you could have a single.
Variances.
A single curb cut and then it flares out to two cars wide.
Yeah, but the the curb cut was already kind of expanded, so um. It's a little bigger. It's a little bigger than eleven, or I mean.
Oh, I see. It's bigger than the driveway.
It could expand out from the. From the ten feet at the property line. It can immediately expand out to. Go to five feet from the setback.
It looks like when you again look at the driveway. If you took the left the existing blacktop there and just. Pushed it over, so it's five feet from the property line, no no more than twenty foot, twenty two feet wide at any point. It should work.
Right.
Steve, why are we trying to solve this problem?
Well, we're just trying to see if we can get it to conform to the zoning.
Okay.
That seems to be her problem, not ours.
Yes, you're right.
Or I can talk if the the width, the width wise twenty four eighty eight. If it take us three foot, it's a twenty one point eight eight, it qualify less than twenty foot. You see my the drawing and the piece of paper like this. And this one, so they're giving that means the measures.
I I guess let me let let me ask you this. I I I don't know how to resolve this right now, other than. Prepare a drawing and give it to Mr. Bridger to review. And what would we, what Derek, what would we do at this point? Would we need to? What do we need to approve, if anything?
I I think. You know, the the drawings are not that uh. Refined um.
Right.
Are good. I I think there's a variance for the. The existing driveway at the curb cut and at the road. Um the curb cut. The curb was expanded. The curb cut was, so. I mean, I don't know if we can get to a variance free situation, but we can eliminate a lot of the variances. We could. Eliminate the setback variance for the driveway. We could. Get it to be twenty feet or not exceed twenty two feet. Where it is permissible, but you still need a variance for the. The curb cut and the. Possibly the width at the property line.
Well, I mean. I I again, Steve responding to your question, and you're right. I was just trying to be helpful and see if we could resolve this. Um. So we could ask the, we could grant the variance for the. For the curb cut width. And then would would um. Would we be able to have the applicant come back in with a sketch, Derek, that you can review? To make sure it conforms?
I mean. If she's agreeable um.
Yes, I agree. Just get to the curb to get the various pass. I can work with the direct contact can move the setbacks. Five foot from neighbor line and that's that's move to my I tell my own property. Move the wide for the drive to car driving, who cars are driving through.
That seemed to make sense, Derek.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so just for clarification, what's being? Granted and what's being denied?
I don't know if anything's being denied. We're just withdraw certain. Requests. I don't know. I I think Derek, what would it be? Just we'd be granting the the curb cut width at the street.
The I mean. What was proposed was basically a twenty five foot driveway opening at the uh. Property line and the ten's permitted, so. If we could keep that at ten and it flare it out. I I think, you know, the the curb cut at the street. Has been expanded, which is is more than, I believe, fourteen feet.
Oh, I see. So. Are we, can we grant a variance on that?
You can, but she still has to go to council to get. Approval for it.
But it 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 seems like she can make it compliant. It it's.
Like she's already taken away part of the Belgium block on the curb cut. Part of it's been removed.
Yeah. I guess I guess all I'm trying to do at this point is is give the applicant some direction. That would allow her to move forward and not necessarily come back to the board. If if that makes any sense to everybody.
Doesn't make any sense to me, Steve, but that's.
I'm not sure it makes sense to me either, but um no, I think I I understand what I'm saying. But I'm just trying to to see if we were to grant. A portion, one variance tonight, which means she's got that taken care of. And then the rest can be resolved and conform to what the requirements are.
Well, Steve, are you saying then the applicant's going to withdraw the request for the other variances?
I guess, but i- i- the applicant has to be the one to do this. I'm just trying to figure out a way forward. Unless unless we carry this through and the board wants to grant her variance requests.
Or deny it.
Or deny it.
Or deny it.
Well, just because the curb cut is is has been um. Performed. It it could be uh she she could need to uh. Landscape back there and just keep the actual apron to the compliant width, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So why don't, why can't she, yeah, make make the make the throat, make the apron compliant? And comply with the setbacks. It it seems.
I I I agree with you, but the applicant has to be, you know, we're um. We're designing this and the applicant has to be the one to do it. So.
Correct, right. So so then what we're doing is we're we're denying the request, right? And and she she needs to comply.
Well, you know, may maybe the best bet. Is to ask for a continuance and allow her to work it out. With Derek and then come back in here for the appropriate variances. So we're not denying it. We're just, she's asking for. A a continuance. I I don't want to be the one to to direct her to do this.
Steve, Steve, why don't you just speak to her and see if she'll agree?
Okay, all right, so um. Yeah, I mean, basically what I'm saying. Um is if you can ask for a continuance right now of the application. And then talk to our zoning officer about making this. Compliant with only a minimum variance. And then come back to the board. You're not, because the only alternative we would have. At this point, if the board chooses to would be to deny it, which would be problematic for you. That would call you, you'd have to go to court to get that changed, and there's no reason to do that. But if you ask for a continuance, you could work with our zoning officer. To see what the minimum number of variances you need would be and then come back to us with a with a sketch that shows what you want to do. That's my suggestion. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Talk to me?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I can work with Derek and then to really make a detail. So if set the setback with the neighbor property line five foot. I can do that, but I need to approve of my curb. The two car driving can come to the street apron. That's why very important. So then I can move my the on the. Drive wide for my toward my own side. So can put the two cars. That's for my landscaping desert area, make it extra three foot wide this side.
Not sure.
I I didn't quite understand that.
I understand that. I think she's looking to make the curb cut. I'm looking at the image from two thou- June two thousand twenty three. It looks like a sledgehammer was taken to the Belgium block. If you look at the Google Maps. Um so it looks like the curb cuts been manually expanded. Um so I don't know.
Yeah. I can see the same thing.
Yeah, you you're right.
So the reason is before I never cut the curb because the valley route have the new innovation, the curb very high. And then my normally my tenant, the car. Before it's very low the curb, so they can throw there to my driveway parking. I have no question. Since the new the valley rule curb very high, the norm the car cannot stay through through the from the road. Valley road to my driveway. So that's why is that is a car. So that's, you know, to have. Too too many car parking, one car not enough. But that's really damage a car. That's why I did cut. The curb. I didn't know this neither to. Zoning variance, everything is my fault. Then since I got a ticket. I cover with the Derek, so that's the to understand in the beginning. Just think the driveway on my side. So you know, I can cut the stone, make a wide, don't damage and then the car. That's very important the thing, so. Just the daughter's that in the beginning of it.
Right.
I I don't understand why the curb could have to be so wide. If you can pull your car in and. All the cars in stay in the apron as it is. I don't know why you have to go over. To the right.
So the driveway one car, you have the people come out. It's because too many car, either two cars. Three car, but the four cars. We need to one or out not enough, one driveway comes to need the two cars.
If the four cars. Jim.
I see, I understand.
Twenty five foot back from the street. Then you could do exactly what you're talking about.
Right, but they're they're just parking on the gravel and coming straight out and just.
Yeah, so so they have to park. They can't park in the front yard effectively.
Right, I got you.
So.
I think you're, what you're saying, Stephen, makes sense if she if she can get her to agree to that, to go and talk.
Alright.
Yeah, that yeah, that's the one. So the tenant can pull the car in, so that's the reason there.
I'm lost.
My point for all of this would be, had she come to us in the first place asking for what she was going to turn it into. It would have. This never would have happened. And I I, you know, she wants spaces for four cars now, but she's got six people living there. What if two students leave and two other people come in with cars? Then she's going to be back to us with another. Spot. I'm totally against doing any of this. But that's just me.
No, um Steve, I agree with you completely.
Yeah, I mean, this was never supposed to be a a multi. You know, a rental apartment for for four or six people. It's supposed to be for a family. And I remember you had to go through the basement to get from one side of the house to the other.
Right, right.
And it it bothers me a lot that the um the curb was disturbed and that the lawn became a de facto parking area. And I gather that's what the violation was for.
Correct.
So the reason why I didn't understand, if I know get touch the zoning variance first, I will do just. After before in my mind, everything belong to my property, I'm in charge of control. I didn't realize. That's the content of curb, I needed the zoning permits. So. That's the is something if I know I wouldn't do it, but things later on said. Before my tenant damage the car is my the liability because over there become the so cloud of packing. So that's before when the rule not the innovation, why I never had the problem, never. Uh tenant complained because the curb very low. They threw this route to my the gravel driveway. I have no question, no problem. I sense then. The driveway uh valley rule innovation curb is so high, no car can still there, so it's damage the car front. So that's the reason for that.
But ma'am, with with all due respect, you've you've been through the zoning process before, and I think you should have known.
Definitely, mom, if I know I wouldn't do it, you know, just uh. Definitely, just think of driving on the curb on my side. I just to. The before look nice, they ask me put a bag. I put the concrete, but then people threw the cars still again. It's that's a they just the they that's the tremor. Just look at the car, this threw up every day. I put it concrete, put a bag, but then is not.
Okay.
Well, I at this point, it's eleven o'clock. Um we're not. Nearly ready to resolve this. Um. I would think I would think the best bet is to carry this application. What do you, board members, what do you think?
I'm ready to vote on it.
All right, well, you want to carry it? Carry it on? We'll carry it on? All right. Well, all right. So um.
Derek, just a question before the board continues. If this is carried, when is it carried to? Because. My understanding is there's very crowded agendas in December, right?
Depending on how much time it would take, I think we could put it on the uh. The regular meeting.
The thirteenth.
Yeah, but we.
And the expectation would be that uh. The applicant's going to have to take into account these comments and come up with some other. Design now, correct? I mean, that's what the board is looking for.
Yeah.
Ma'am, do you understand that? That that's what the board is suggesting, that you come back next month? And that you create a different parking arrangement? And that you create a different parking arrangement that you could review with the board?
Yes.
Okay. So it sounds like this is acceptable to the applicant, um. Is that acceptable to the rest of the board or?
What's our alternative?
I guess the alternative is to vote on it tonight and uh.
I'm not sure who that serves.
I mean, it's not, it's not clear at this point, wh- what the applicant will come back with, and it could be that what what works or what she would like is still not going to be acceptable to the board, but I guess the point of this proposal is that it gives her a chance, she's heard the comments, and that will be her decision now, whether she makes the changes that she's hearing and comes back with something different or she doesn't.
Well, we just carry it through now, have public comment, have it go into executive session to vote on something.
Well. Well, perhaps at least two things we want that she could, if she wants to, you know, put this on hold is we want ten feet at uh driveway width at the property line.
Yes.
And I'm not clear on how how narrow the curb cut we want. Even if it's a foot over or, but if you can clarify that, those are the two things. Plus, no need for a side yard setback.
Right.
And if you want to come back.
No need for a side yard setback variance.
Variance, yes.
Yeah.
And if you want to come back with those three things, for sure. You might have a a a a chance to get this passed.
Yes.
But if you know you you can't live with that, then we could go ahead and see how the vote comes out now.
So uh clarify, if a setback a five foot from my property line, accept and that one. And then I doesn't make it the last, the twenty-two foot, twenty-one point eight eight. Qualify, don't have the zoning over the twenty-two, uh, the requirement is the twenty-two uh for the thing here. So seventy-five, seventy-two, I qualify that one, not the twenty-five, since I take a back three foot from the property line, from the setback. So that's why I don't need the very, only need the variance for cut my curb for the township municipal part of the that one. There's a set of for the five foot from neighbor property side, so you can pass the variant tonight. I just no more because twenty-five becomes a take three, become a twenty-two. Twenty-two qualify, setback for qualify five foot. So can you just pass this variance or just to get the so does a cut the curb to prove this variance limit to through the attend tonight. So I'm just satisfied, take the three foot of property setback.
I'm sorry, I I was lost halfway through that.
Yeah, I know what I said, I'm not sure what you said.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not, I I just can't quite follow exactly everything you're saying, but.
Okay, I explain to you, before the setback is five foot from neighbor side, two two foot. Now I take five foot at the your, the.
Okay.
Yes.
No variance. If that's a remove and the no variance for the first seventy-five, twenty-two foot proposal twenty-two, two, this is not the variance, that's the one satisfied.
And then you'll change the curb cut at the street?
Uh, still need the like, it's before the fix, uh, before the thirteen, uh, thirteen. And then become two and pick it three foot like a eleven, like a top. Curb cut.
Okay, you you know, ma'am, I I think what's happening is it it's difficult for the board to follow you and you don't have any drawing for them to see. So we'll we'll leave this your choice, you just need to make it now, whether you want to come back next month with a new drawing, show the board what it is you want to do. I think you've heard what they would like you to do.
Okay, I'll come back the next month.
Okay, so now, so we'll just, it's being carried then to December thirteenth. Okay.
Okay, what what are we comfortable from the curb cut standpoint, because I mean, we make that clear to her, so when she comes back, she comes back with it with a curb cut that we're, okay? What is the curb cut that we will allow?
What i- is ten, ten is what's supposed to be compliant, Derek?
At the property line and then at the uh, at the street, at the curb, it's fourteen feet is the maximum.
Fourteen. I I think she should try to make it fourteen.
Yeah, yeah.
And then someone said you can then flare it out from there, but from the property. But yeah, we're looking.
I mean, I think there's too many, there's too many cars parking there, so I I think if if she can get all those cars in and make it compliant, then, you know, that's acceptable, but I I don't think we should make exceptions to fit too many cars in there.
No, I agree.
So I don't understand, so not allow me to curb the cutting the, the vapor for cutting the curb, so uh, I need the two car driveways, even the twenty-two. I need to give the two car go in the my driveway, that the, that's the minimum request.
You can't, you can't have two, you can't be two cars wide, it has to be narrow when you go in, then you can go wider out.
Yeah.
It's not enough room for us.
Well, it's gonna have to be, because that's not. It's not an apartment building, it's 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 a, it's a.
But look, it's opposite to my neighbor, look, it's a two four seven. You can pull three car on the side, the same driveway, looks the one. All around the my valley road, all the cars are two car wide, pull on the street. So so looks the, looks around the valley road. Doesn't look my neighbor opposite two four seven, it can three car from the street who they are the, they are driveway. So I spoke here from one car driveway to come two cars from the streets, I don't think I have required too much. If for my the single family house, I have the.
Well, you can, you can come back and argue that.
Yeah.
Next meeting.
I don't know how the people across the street got that, got that car curb cut, because that is, uh, I don't know what that is, it looks like an office building.
Well, just the history, there was no ordinance regulating curb cuts until two thousand eighteen, when they did neighborhood character, so.
Okay.
That's what it was, and and the guy that built the house was a contractor and lived there, the trainee family. God bless them.
Okay, so, so this application will be carried to December thirteenth, ma'am, you understand that, and you will come back with a new drawing, uh, you've heard what the board would like and uh you can explain it to them at the next meeting then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Okay. All right, so. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Have a good Thanksgiving holiday, everyone.
Yeah, you too.
Yeah, you too.
You guys do, we'll see a lot in December, it looks like.
Okay.
Yes.
Good night.
Good night.
Hey, Derek, you, Derek, you once told us, what's the status of the extra meeting?
Uh, it looks like it's gonna be December sixth, I just need to iron some stuff out with.
Okay.
With.
Not January then.
No, sir.
Okay.
Now we have most of January off, sorry about the special meeting, I appreciate you guys being available for it, so.
Nothing we'd rather do.
I know that.
Good night.
Good night.
Night, everyone.